I will call this March 20th, 2024 budget meeting to order. I will start with a brief statement. We govern ourselves as often as important as the positions we take. Our collective decision center, when differing views have had the opportunity to be fully All those appear who appear before town council have the right to be treated with respect, courtesy and openness. I believe that we as a council value all input accordingly. I ask that we conduct ourselves with civility and courtesy, both to those with whom the council interacts and to each other. In the effort to hear all opinions and input, we have added public input to both the beginning and the end of all of these budget meetings. The public input will be, the time limits will be strictly enforced. So it's two minutes at the beginning and three minutes at the end. And public comment is limited to agenda items only. I will remind the public that we do have a public hearing scheduled for April 2nd, 2024, 7:00 PM. It is a hybrid meeting here in this room and on Zoom. So additional comments about the budget. If you would like to give us additional comments about the budget, that is an additional opportunity for you to do so. So we will start with public petitions, communications and public participation. This is limited to agenda items only. And it limit, we'll go back and forth between the room and online. We'll start in the room. If someone would like to make a comment, give us your name and your address.
Can I tell you to sit up first?
That's not on this agenda.
Really?
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, George Fishin, Game Road. There's a quick question. I noticed as a school budget, I'd like to know why the percentage is so high compared to the last 11, 12 years. And I would like the town council to explain to me where the people that are on fixing comes, which is probably just as many equal to or more than there are in school. And just this increase alone is going to take everything that I got from security this year. And how am I supposed to be the increases in electricity and gas and heating and all of such? So that would be my question. How do you figure that's going to work out for the rest of us? And have you considered that you don't represent the school? You represent the town and all citizens of the town and not just the school? It seems that very one sided here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone online? Christine Griffin? We give her permission to speak.
Hello, can you hear me? Okay, yes.
Can you hear you?
Yes. Christine, can you hear me? Christine?
Hello?
Hello.
Can you hear me now?
Sam, yes.
Okay, it's keep saying the host needs to unmute me. So did you hear anything I said?
No.
No. Okay, I will start again. Christine Griffin, 80 Doran. I'm hoping that tonight somebody can address the fact, especially in an effort to be fully transparent, that the Board of Ed budget request is actually $2,730,722 or 6.45%. I believe that taxpayers should be aware that the moving of the geothermal loan to the town books frees up almost $650,000 of Board of Ed funding and that this amount still needs to be paid somehow. My opinion is really irresponsible that the town will not have this recurring expense. I emailed town council members and it was only a couple of days ago, so I'll give you guys a couple more days to respond, but perhaps you can address it here. You know, what is the plan to cover this loan for its remaining life? And so if you could address this tonight and how, I believe it's got about 10 years left. So again, I just want to know how we're going to be moving forward with paying for this loan. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak? Please come on up. Give us your name and your address.
Andrea Barletta, 699 Schnipsit Lake Road. Like this gentleman, I'm curious as to how we plan to help the senior citizens. Last April, I was, last April 1st, I was a very healthy, very mobile person. April 2nd, I was wailed by somebody who is allowed to have $100,000 in insurance because I'm on Medicare. My Medicare gets paid back. The attorney gets paid. I get nothing. Now I need people to help me with housework, yard work. And now I'll have hugely increased tax bill along with all the utilities. I guess the yard work and the house maintenance will just have to go to heaven when the house is falling down, maybe the town will help me. I'm just curious how you plan on helping the people that aren't in school.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online who would like to comment? You can raise your Zoom hand or press star nine. Mr. Khan.
Hello. Sammy Khan, 61 Farm Brook Drive, Tallinn, Connecticut, 0604. Like to make a, like to make a comment about the budget and the proposal. As the lady says before me, that there are too many people out there suffering with the inflation, everything else. And because of others, they are paying the price. And they are not even, can afford to afford a cup of coffee, Dunkin' Donut, because it's way too expensive. And lately I've heard few people that is the rumor. It says if you cannot afford to live, move back, move somewhere else. I don't like that comment. I mean, nobody has that much power to say that. In response to that, I would like to say that's my, only my comments. If people are saying that about those people, what I like to say if they do not like this system, they can move, move out for a better location. Because this is a town, this is a community. It's not, it's not a one person community. It's a whole community of 14,000 people. So consider other people too, besides the Board of Education or anything else. Consider elderly people, retired people, single people. Consider those people before you make your decision about the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak? Is there anyone else online who would like to speak? Seeing no one else, we will move on to agenda item three, which is consideration of the town manager's proposed FY '24, '25 budget. Mr. Foley, please take it away.
Thank you, Chair. For anyone here or watching at home, the copy of this will be available on our town website tomorrow, my presentation. Let me move over to screen sharing. All right. Okay. So I'm going to move through the budget here. As you know, I'm a proud Tallinn resident. I've been basically my whole life, as we all are, proud of our great town, our great school system and our great community. And now we're going to move into our annual budget process, which can get bumpy at times. I ask everyone, again, as Chair asked, to be respectful. We'll do the best we can to try to come up with the best budget and put it forward to referendum. I submitted my budget to town council and I'm going to review that here tonight. This is the proposed budget for fiscal year '24, '25. We have it balanced per state law. The projected revenue money that we're going to take in essentially is just under $65 million, The, on the spending side, expenditures, the general fund expenditure budget is $59,215,556. That includes operating expenses for the Board of Ed and town government. On top of those expenditures is $5,376,489, which is our debt service. And the general fund share of the capital improvements plan also is included in 397, just under $400,000. Normal debt service is 4.7 million, but we have the additional $676,489 increase that is the reclassification of the ESCO Board of Ed Town Project to the debt services account from the general operating account. So moving again, again to the budget summary. Incorporated into our revenue is $300,000 from unassigned fund balance. Typically, we, last year we did 200,000. This year it's up to 300,000 plus 78,000 for the municipal tax stabilization fund. To offset the increase of the general fund capital improvements pay as you go funding without impacting the mill rate. The town's grant list grew by just over half percent or under 1%, 0.66%. That is modest growth, but it is still some growth. Other revenues also increased. Our investment income increased by $306,000. That's thanks to smart movement of money by our finance department directed by Lisa Hancock, who will be here tonight to answer any questions. The proposed mill rate increase is to 39.27. That's a 5.20% increase or 1.94 mills increase. The Board of Education's adopted budget for '24, '25 is $45,071,48. That represents 2 million, over a $2 million increase, roughly 4.84% over fiscal year '23, '24 budget of 42 million or almost 43 million. This budget is the second option adopted by the Board of Ed budget, which includes reclassifying the ESCO payment to the debt services account.
Brian, could you advance this?
Yeah, sorry. I need to change the hours here.
Do you need me to help you with the figure?
Yeah, you want to do, you want to do that long run. Thanks, Lisa. One hand doesn't know if you have that. One more. There we are. All right. Okay, this is required by law. This is a, if you were charter, probably by law as well. This is a comparison of side by side revenue versus expenditures year to year going back to '22, '23. And it kind of highlights the changes in budgets and the directions we're going. This next one is the historic in proposed budget revenues that we've taken in. So you can kind of go back all the way to 2018 and look at our grants, our investment income, how much money we're taking in. And then the proposed budgets, the grant list growth as well. You can see that we've had some, only one year where the grant list didn't grow through there, so we're doing our right as a town. And then historically, the mill increases back to 2015. The impact of the governor's budget on the town of Tallinn. So there's a lot of estimates we do based on, we've built some unknowns coming out of the state. Most state revenues remain status quo with the exception of the increase of $175,378 in cost sharing funds, the ECS as we call it, and an increase in the motor vehicle tax stabilization fund of 180,000. Uncertainty over state revenues that could be subject to interim reductions. Again, it's, we're not sure of what we're going to actually get in the end, but we have some pretty good estimates, we think. The uncertainty and the impact of the future of these, there's uncertainty with the ECS funding. We continue to forecast reductions in our long term financial plan for a conservative approach for future years analysis. We've chosen to reflect the governor's full ECS funds in this year's budget and hopefully we'll end up that way. This next page is the governor's proposed fiscal year '25 budget adjustments with the governor's budget adjustments for the town of Tallinn. And let's move into town revenues for '24, '25. All right, these are the projected decreases or increases for '24, '25. And you can see the ECS, as we talked about, 175,000, adult education is small. The state and federal grants, 184,000. The charges have gone down, the current charges of the revenue there. And then the interest and income, 306,000. We talked about that, the good investment, but there's an increase. The used tax stabilization fund, I said, is 300,000, but it's a 100,000 increase. And then the 78,000 from the tax stabilization fund. That's from fund balance and the tax stabilization fund. And they said that an amount of 300,000 from the fund balance is recommended to be used as revenue. Also 78,000 for municipal tax stabilization fund to offset the increase in the general fund capital improvements. It's being recommended to use 78,000 for the municipal tax stabilization fund for the next four years to offset the capital contribution from the general fund and minimize the impact of the pay as you go financing on the mill rate. Once debt starts falling off the books, the council can consider more pay as you go, which I believe is everyone's goal here. So it's recommended that our fund balance maintain in between 10 and 15%. And that's, that's based on the recommendations of the, to obtain a AAA credit rating. We need to keep, maintain a AAA credit rating because it affects how much we pay in interest and we get the best rates. We have one of the highest AAA ratings. Do we have the highest rating we can get?
Yes, we do.
So we have really good credit and it saves us a lot of money and we do not want to move from that because everything will get more expensive. At June 30th, close of last fiscal year, unassigned fund balance was at 16.6%. Well, you know, above the 10 to 15% that's recommended. And estimate year end unassigned fund balance for fiscal year '23, '24 to be at 16.8. With the estimated fund balance use in this '24, '25 budget, the percentage is estimated to decrease to 15.5. So we believe we're still safe and putting a good amount of money towards, or using a good amount from fund balance. But this is not a revenue source. We can't rely upon it in the future. This is a one time use of funds that may not be able to be duplicated in future years. The next page gives you a kind of look at where our fund balance has been over the last 13 and 14 years. And again, it's kind of estimated where we'll be next year. But that's kind of a picture of what it looks like. We got up to 16.8, which is great. And now we're going to start trying to get it down towards 15. These are trends in general revenue sources and graphs. It kind of makes it easier to understand where our money is coming from. Obviously, the blue is property taxes, state aid, and then other sources. Moving on to the expenditure side.
Excuse me, Mr. Foley, is this the only time that you'll be reviewing revenue? Or is that also going to be covered in a, either later tonight or another meeting?
I will go. I don't, I don't have any more on revenue here in this package, do we? No, that's, that's all we have for revenue.
Okay, then if you don't mind, I'd like to stop you at this point. So that council members could ask any revenue related questions that they might have. So now that I've done that, are there any questions for the town manager on revenue?
Yeah.
Mr. Murray, go ahead.
We got a couple. Thank you, Brian and Lisa, for being here tonight and preparing this. I guess my first question is for like the investment money that we've been able to get through diligent management of funds this past couple of years. Where does that go? Does that go right into the general assigned fund balance and that would? Yes.
It goes at the end of the year, after all revenues and expenditures are closed out, the difference between all revenues and expenditures goes to fund balance.
Okay. Okay, so that's, that's the plan. So it's not allocated specifically anywhere in this budget and it just could go.
Well, it is allocated as a revenue source in this budget on this fiscal year. And you know, each fiscal year, it's a revenue source in the budget.
Yeah, that goes into unsigned.
But at the end of the year, whatever your differences are, it goes to unassigned or assigned fund balance, depending where we are. But let's just say fund balance. And so everything closes into fund balance at the end of the fiscal year in the general fund.
Okay.
The only thing that does not close to the general fund at the end of fiscal year would be anything that falls under the municipal stabilization tax ordinance. And those funds would be redistributed into those funds, segregated as the general fund specific.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I got a couple more questions. So for the municipal tax stabilization fund, you're recommending 78,000 for the next four years specifically to pay for capital items. What's the, what's the balance? Do you remember the balance that fund is now?
For the stabilization?
Yeah.
Yeah. The current balance in that fund is 362,452. That was as of the end of June of '23. I'm estimating this year that it will go up to about 770,000, depending on how the year closes out with unanticipated revenues from the state that we're getting this year. So it'll probably go up to about 770,000.
Okay.
By Ortiz, the most you could use in any one year out of that fund is 300,000.
Okay. Okay. And then one, one, I'm looking at a chart. It looks like, you know, we, grants have increased year over year, but it still looks like property taxes as a proportion of total revenue are, continue to go.
Oh, 80, every 80% of your revenue source are property taxes.
Yeah.
And that chart that we had showed you earlier here, you will see down in these years, you had more state grants.
Yep.
Your, your other revenue sources, you know, very minor. Some years were up and down, but you know, your two biggest revenue sources are property taxes and state and federal grants, mostly state grants. And as you could see over the years, they've kind of gone downwards. Couple of years it went up, but in most cases, we've had a loss in state revenue, which then distributes the burden to the taxpayers.
Yeah, it's got to be a balanced budget, so that's how it is. Okay. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Council Murray. Is there anyone else? Yes, Council Murray.
Just two questions, one following up on Jacob's point. Can you just walk us, Lisa, through how you decided on 78,000 from the municipal tax stabilization fund? I know, you know, policy allows up to $300,000 per year, but just based on anticipated balance being 770, can you just walk us through the 78?
Sure. And yes, that was my recommendation to the manager. Our general fund, what I've tried to do with our capital program is to try to level the impact on the budget, whether it comes to debt or the portion that the general fund has to contribute. So in the next few years, we've, we're going to be around 397,000 for the next four years, based on our capital plan as it is right now. That's about a 78, 77, 78,000 dollar increase to the amount that the general fund would need to contribute. Had I not recommended the use of the, you know, the tax stabilization fund, then that would have been a burden on the mill rate. So my recommendation is that these are sort of one time expenditures that will eventually go away or we will have other revenue funding sources at least four years down the road. In the fifth year on the capital plan, you'll see that the general fund contribution has gone down a bit. So this year it's gone up 78,000. I recommended using those funds and didn't recommend using all of it because I was trying to do one time revenues with one time expenditures to try to ease the burden. It still leaves some extra there for other one time expenditures or ever, or however the town council chooses to want to use those funds. You know, we could provide any analysis that you might need.
Okay. And then the other question I have on an earlier slide, the fund balance continued slide, it talks about the unassigned balance fund being at about 16.6%. And then projecting it for the end of fiscal year '23, '24 to be at 16.8%, but that if we use the 378,000 that we're proposing, that will bring down the balance to 15 and a half percent, which, and my records is about $11 million in the, in those.
Yeah, here's, here's your numbers right here. I don't know if you can see that.
Yeah.
Hold on a second and get that out of the way. So yes, as of last year, this, this is the unassigned fund balance, 11, almost 11.1 million. Might be a little different than what's in your annual audit report because the auditors included something that should have been shown as committed. That's the right number. So if you, this is where we're estimating depending on where we end up the year. Third quarter, that number could change. This was just the estimate as of the financial update I gave you in December. Things have been happening since December. So that will go up. Again, this percentage is based on total expenses, gap expenses. So we have to estimate what we think those expenses will be as of the end of the fiscal year. And also the use coming out for the next fiscal year. So that's how your percentages kind of change. Not only is the number going down, but you're also having higher expenses, which creates that percentage fluctuating.
Okay, so even just using 378,000, that will lead it by almost like a 1% of, or over 1%.
Over 1%.
Great. Thank you.
And there's more information in your budget book and feel free to, you know, reach out to me. That shows the ins and outs of how you get to those numbers. There's a whole fund balance that is in there.
Any other questions on revenues?
Oh. Can we ask a question from, on revenues? Well. Okay, I'm just on revenues. I was going to ask a question on page 47, analysis of tax rates, but revenue would, that we counted in, I think, as the lead up thing that the state offers is that potential revenue that helps with public works and street, street plan. It's called NIP.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah.
Oh, yes, we do get the NIP revenue that goes into a separate fund. And what we do each year is we've allocated it towards the street sweeping, the catch base and cleaning. And we've reduced the general fund budget by the amount. There wasn't a lot between 16,000 and 20,000 last year. So again, this year, the same thing will occur, that those funds will be used towards that expense and that portion of it is not included in the general fund.
Okay, just wanted to clarify. Yep, last year, right, a little bit, we got. Okay, just wanted to clarify, I said, uh, yep, last year, I did a little bit, we got about it. Um, and then some of the revenue is, but businesses too, we have a new business coming at the end of the year that should generate more revenue that's not listed in the book.
Right.
Regarding, you know, rent, lawn or shop or something, and there's so much that we get and the state gets. Why is that not included in the book?
Well, no. There, there are certain restrictions. Right now, we don't even have an estimate, a clear estimate yet of where those funds may come from. Um, the state does have certain restrictions as to how those tax revenues can be used. And, um, I think that would be a discussion for the town council as to what route they would wanna take to use those funds based on the allowances within the statute.
Gotcha. Okay, so that makes sense. Okay. Um, that will be a discussion at an upcoming council meeting relatively soon.
Yes, there's, there's, if, they have a temporary CO. We expect them to have a full CO in April. When they open, there'll be a couple of month lag before we start basically get a bill. They get a bill from the state of how much to pay the town.
Okay.
Uh, that's gonna, I expect that to be two or three months. Looking at other towns, some towns have a policy on how they spend it, some don't. Just kind of stay with the, the state law that has, uh, a little bit more. If you wanted to fine tune it a little bit more, we could have a policy on how we spend it.
Could you just give some examples of that?
Drug education, um, drug prevention, uh, that sort of thing.
Okay, so it can't be used as revenue in order to?
No, it's pretty, it's pretty well defined. I can, I can send that to, uh, council. We're gonna have to, we're gonna, you'll get all that education.
I was just wondering.
Yeah, we can't swim it around.
Yeah, cause it's a big chunk. Um, but, all right, my other question was on, in the, you know, under that tab, but.
Yeah, I think, um, I think it's okay to ask something on the overview.
I think one question.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
The town manager did cover all the ones you mentioned, so.
Yes, please.
You guys.
Okay. Um, first of all, thank you to staff for putting all the work in. Angela's, I can't imagine, and we were Katie, the tabs are wonderful. It's much easier. But anyway, I don't know if it's actually maybe more of a Jason question, but on page forty-seven, under the analysis of tax rates, it looks like next year, uh, well, two thousand twenty-four, we're only gonna do about ninety-eight, uh, we're setting the levy is ninety-seven point eighty-seven. And then tax levy is ninety point five. So it looks like the liquid tax is the estimate of about eight hundred and twenty-four thousand, which is, seems a lot higher than I thought. The target rate should usually be about ninety-nine percent.
Yes, that, that is because that's only a snapshot as of the end of February.
Okay.
We haven't completed the year yet, so those numbers will more than likely change. They're just a snapshot as of February, so they're not.
Okay, so it's not financial hardships on people, that's why the?
No, we're, we're we're fairly close to where we've been consistently. And, and in the calculation of mill rate, I did use a ninety-nine percent collection rate on the current levy again this year.
Okay, cause I just noticed somewhere in here that I think we have thirty-five thousand more than we normally do because of late fees and stuff, but that's all I have, Katie.
Thank you. Are there any other questions on overview revenue?
Yeah. Sure.
Um, the CBD shop, why can't, why can't we get a, some sort of an estimate? Cause my understanding, these revenues are gonna be pretty substantial, even though we're getting three percent revenue. If we look at the West Hartford shop, for example, that they're operating, their revenues and see what they have and apply three, even if we take half of it, we, we, we could be talking three hundred thousand dollars that town is gonna get on an annual basis from the shop. So, and something to consider, considering that it's gonna open before the start of fiscal year, we should start getting revenue in, I'd say before Jim.
Probably not.
I would guess not before, I would guess around July or August was the estimate.
Yeah, the start of our fiscal year.
So we don't know how busy they're gonna be. Um, it'd be, it'd be loose predictions, but, um, I, we can predict, try to predict, but again, it's gonna be a weather report and.
Yeah.
You know, what if it's not that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's substantial not to think about it. Um, because, you know, if you look at what they're generating in West Hartford, you can talk to the owner and he can give you some, he can probably give you some solid estimates. I mean, you gotta have a business plan when you open up this shop or these plans to open up the shop, so, uh, definitely worth considering. Um, also on the, on the assigned fund too, I'm trying to understand how you got this percentage. Because if I go down, you said sixteen point eight one. And if I look at with the balance of eleven, four, seven, five divided by sixteen point eight one, that's total expenditure was sixty-eight million dollars.
Yes.
On our budget, it's only sixty-one million dollars. So what's there for seven million dollars?
That is, um, at year end, what, these numbers in the rating agencies, everybody looked at is what's called generally accepted accounting principles. Um, I said that for those who may not understand it. Um, and that includes different accruals and deferrals, things like that in those numbers. The big chunk of that number is the oddly half payments that the state of Connecticut makes for the teachers' retirement, which is usually anywhere between five and seven million dollars.
Right.
Um, that's the, the big addition to what your budget is. Um, in.
Will there be a reversal from the prior year so that they're kind of net out? So you're saying is a net increase from year over year of seven million dollars that?
Usually that's where it, it ends up with our number plus another seven million, so it's consistent. So our number may be fifty million one year, then plus another seven, or sixty million plus another seven. That's always added on. It's not going, um, it's based on that final number. I was trying to see if I could find a page to refer that you'd be able to see it. It's under the fund summaries and it shows you at the bottom. It'll be more.
Difference between these, you spent that we see in this report and the expense you used for the GAAP expenditure, which just sounds like some sort of a pool that gets added on. And why isn't there your cool coming off from the prior year? That, that was recognized in the prior year. And so the, the net of the two should really only be an increase year over year in that fund. And that, that retention in time, I think I'm talking about.
I, I understand what you're saying, but each year it looks at the grand total number. Okay, so example, on page one sixteen is, um, I'd like to reference you too. At the end of tw- twenty-two, twenty-three, that gap number was almost sixty-seven million bucks. Okay?
I'm sorry, what?
Um, page one sixteen, if you go right to the bottom of that page, you're gonna see, um, in bold, do you see sixty-six, eight, eighty-six?
Yeah.
One sixty-three? Okay, that was the final gap number. Okay.
Okay.
Now you'll notice we're estimating for twenty-three, twenty-four, did not go up another seven or eight million. It did go up a couple of million because we use like a two percent factor or so to try to estimate the best we can based on, um, where we think we'll end this year, as well as trying to estimate what those gap entries might be. You don't know them till you finish the year. So it's not going up seven million each year, but it is going up a couple of million each year.
Right. So I would expect only max two million dollar difference between the sixty-one versus the, let's say sixty-three, and then it's seven.
Well, no, it's, it's sixty, it's almost sixty-seven original. Okay, if you look at the actual one for twenty-two, twenty-three, it's, I'm saying sixty-seven, sixty-six, eight, eighty-six. All right?
Yep.
Then the next year, for this year that we're not finished with yet, we estimate a little bit of an increase, not only between, we have this year's budget that increased and the revenues and expenses where we think will be. All those are factored in here. And then an increase in what we think those GAAP adjustments will be.
I'm, I'm glad that's a clarifying question. I, I might get you there. Um, are you saying that the, uh, the state contribution to the teacher's retirement fund, which is a yearly contribution, is assigned or calculated into our yearly expenses? So it's not something that comes off every year and gets added on, but the state pays this money and it gets attributed to our operating budget?
Right. It goes in as a revenue expense to our budget.
Right, but it's, it's, it was, an amount was accrued for in the prior year. But that wasn't, that wasn't in the expense.
Not accrued, expended.
Right, you say you always have to add an accrual on.
Well, there's other number, other things in your GAAP.
Right, so I'd like to understand what that is. It's a big difference between expenditures and a GAAP number. And obviously that has a, a large impact on a percentage you have to talk about. So I wanna make sure that, you know, year over year, we understand what's getting added from a GAAP perspective, it's not a year that's impacting this, this percentage. Because it seems like the percentage is, is understated. We can just, you know, if you look at the expense that we see here compared to what's being presented here, which means that there's, there's technically more money there than really meets the eye. Like as far as exceeding the, the ten to fifteen percent recommendation. That's what I'm just trying.
I'm not sure I'm following you.
So right now, you're saying we have sixteen point eight. The recommended.
Estimated.
Estimated sixteen point eight, right. And it's based on GAAP expenses, right? So the GAAP expenses are sixty-eight million dollars, but the expenses we see in the budget are only sixty-one million dollars.
That is correct.
Seven million dollar difference, a huge difference.
Yes.
And this number, this, this number that you're pointing out to me, and again, if you're accruing for something one year, so you've got your GAAP expense last year, layer it on top of that as your accrual, then we get to this year, that accrual reverses. So it's no longer, you gotta reverse that out of your, your expenses because you accounted for your prior number.
Right, it wasn't. That's, so I probably, there, there are other things that might be in as an accrual entry that affect these numbers, but the, the teachers' retirement, which is by far the biggest chunk that makes up this GAAP number, is an expense. It's not an accrual. It's definitely there. And it's not coming back out the next year. It's paid. It's an expense. The next year you will have whatever that number is, which again averages right around. It, it fluctuates from year to year, depending on how much the state contributes on behalf of, of the teachers.
Right, I understand that, but so.
But it's not an accrual where it comes in and goes out, so I.
It becomes an expense, though.
It is an expense.
It shows up in this report next year, so you recognize that the prior year from the GAAP perspective, uh, is that they're accrued for it, and I only.
Right. Each, each of these numbers here on that, uh, third lineup from the bottom, you know, right above the percentages are all GAAP numbers. From year to year.
Is there one you can give me a trail from the sixty-one million to the sixty-eight million that we're using? So I can see what all the, all the adjustments are that were made. So it come up with a sixty-eight?
I do not have exact numbers because basically what I do is I take about a two percent increase because it's an average each year that I've always used. Um, so a one to two percent. And that maybe.
Would you do it for basically your twenty-three actual?
The twenty-three actual we can get from the audit report, there is a page in there that gets you from budget to GAAP. So the regular, you'll see a page, and I could certainly sit with you if you'd like to come in.
I mean, I'd like to, I'd like the council to, to see what the, some of this difference.
Yeah, and I think we did go through that when we presented the audit, but I'm not sure. I thought she did go through getting from the different numbers, showing you on a budgetary basis and a GAAP basis. But, um, I could certainly share the pages and be available for questions.
Fifty-one to sixty-eight.
Cause there's, there's so many ins and outs that make that number. But it's definitely in our audit report. Um, we may make a note to, to do that. To at least get it for you.
Yeah, I'd like to see a trail. There's one, one number to the next. Um, then the other thing you talk about, like, there's a you talk about, um, the gross, uh, I wish I was able to, I would watch the page on this. When we, when we look at what our assessed values are, our, our properties, we back out a couple of numbers.
Yes.
From those values.
That would be under your budget summary section, and that would be a.
I don't know.
Find it. I don't have the tax like you have. There, there are in, the, the one where you're backing out numbers and doing adjustments, the page sixty-six.
Oh, thanks.
I did get sixty-six, but we thought they were about at the bottom of that page.
So I'm gonna jump page seventy-five.
Page seventy-five?
Yeah, it starts with a grant list and then it gets down to where, thing, okay, here's basically how your, you know, your property tax revenues are gonna be determined is based on the grant list value. And you deduct from gross to net grant list of a billion one ninety-three, this elderly, uh, deduction for a million eight fifty-five. I assume that's the, the state credit that some elderly people.
That is the, our local ordinance sixty and.
No, that's.
I'm not sure if there's still the elderly state freeze that's in there.
No, there's, well, the ordinance sixty with five point nine, so I got a question about that. But that's a quick question.
Yeah, oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. You're right. The elderly is the state freeze program that, um,
Okay. So that's.
That the elderly get for exemptions.
Is that the word max is, they can get like a twelve hundred dollar credit? Cause the state freeze program, that ended like back in.
But there's still some people.
Eighty or something like that? These people gotta be like a hundred and five years old.
There's still people grandfathered. It has reduced over the years, but.
So.
There's still some going in and out.
It's twelve hundred dollar credit that they get, I mean, it's, it maxes out, but it then it scales down more, more than maybe. You basically have to be below poverty to get twelve hundred, but, um, it maxes out, so I was just wondering if that's.
These, these are the numbers, um, I worked with our assessor to give me these estimates. And, uh, he's the one who files all the reports with the state of Connecticut. So he gives me his best estimate of where he thinks we will be. And, you know, and, and this particular page that you're referring to is pretty much the same information on that other page that I showed you. For, for twenty-four, twenty-five, the going out forward is the best where we think the next five years will be. That, that's certainly subjective. Um.
Okay. I mean, maybe there's something we'll have to talk to the assessor about, because my concern here is that we're backing out five point nine million from the values. And, and I looked at the five point nine million and I said, okay, if you, if you basically gross that, the tax, tax that times the tax rate, the mill rate, it comes out to a credit basically that the elderly are getting of, uh, two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. And I thought from our discussions with the, with the town assessor and, um, and Brian, we make it back to check it. But he said that at the time, the maximum credit that we're certain, we're currently seeing is about a hundred thousand um, related to this ordinance sixty program, so that using five point nine, reducing gross basis by higher number effectively says that there's less value, so you need a higher mill rate. So if this value is overs, if this reduction is overstated, it's really putting in a higher mill rate than what is truly based.
We can go through it again with him.
Yeah.
Um, again, it's based on where he thinks the new, as of the ordinance that was recently updated, um, that may allow for more people and higher, um, credits than they've received in the past based under the new ordinance sixty that was passed. Um, again, these were the estimates that he gave me.
Okay, so I think we gotta, I think we just have to.
Absolutely.
Just as a footnote, the maximum credit under this ordinance that, that the seniors can get is, is a whole lot of being two hundred thousand dollars. So it's.
We'll explore bringing Jason to the fiscal meeting if you'd like, um, when, when Lisa had to us her fiscal. Um, as part of the assessors, Lisa, do you answer either?
Um, for when?
When you, we, when we do the fiscal, your budget.
Oh, the year end? No, when you do your budget presentation.
Okay, Jason cannot be here.
Oh, he can't be there, that's right. He's got a kid thing.
But if, uh, I can ask him specific questions. I know, I'll see what I can get for him. It's tomorrow night. Um, regarding that, but when he did go through and calculate this, these were the numbers that he gave me that he felt that would be.
Joe, if you wanna reply, email me. I can get him to, to answer it by tomorrow.
Sure. Yeah, this might also be a Jason question too. I mean, certificates of correction and then, uh, the board of assessments appeals that amounts to like another uh, what's the total? About six, six point five, roughly six point five, no. Five, yeah, five, because the million five certificate is a lot.
Yeah, you have some that are added, COs are added.
So the six, I think it's a correction, the way. So the six, I think it's a correction, the weight, five dollar fee, and then there's also the foundation reduction. So the sum of those adds up to like five point six, okay, something like that.
Right.
Um, how do you come up with this? What is a certificate of correction, first of all? And how do you come up with a number of five and a half million dollar reduction?
There, there's a number of things that, um, come into play. Well, you have the Board of Assessment Appeals, which is separate, but there's, there's things that happen throughout the year. People will either, um, add on to their property, take off of their property, depending on, um, things that may be an error or something to that effect. I can't give you the specific details, but I can get that for you. Um, those are the average of each year, what comes on, what goes off, and, um.
Okay, so this is showing a reduction of four and a half. So it's coming off this four and a half million of value. A net, I guess it's a net reduction. And then we're estimating that the Board of Appeals is going to allow for a billion dollars of reduction in property assessments. Is that, are those just estimate? I mean, it's got to be estimate.
Well, it's estimates and stuff that he is aware of.
Okay, so if we can get some details on that, that will be great. Is that an estimate? The hundred forty yet or not the hundred, uh, the hundred, it's not.
The, the number for crumbling foundations is going down because we're getting a lot more, um. Last.
Oh, where's the San Tini, uh, where's the San Tini valuation included after we get the new apartments that are going?
That will come on once the apartments are completed. Um, there are phases where the assessor, based on what's been done so far, will add into the grand list if it was, you know, by October first. Um, if they should happen to complete before the end of the fiscal year, that's one of the things of the adds and the deductions that come in with the, uh, certificates of occupancy and things like that that are estimated.
So is, is that the estimate built into the grand list for the the San Tini apartments? You can get back to me, so.
Yeah, I, I don't think there was a full amount. I know there's an estimate, not an estimate, but an assessed value for whatever was done as of October twenty three, because that's this grand list.
But that's, as of, as of October twenty first, here, October, what he thinks.
October first of twenty three is the grand list we go off of.
Okay, so obviously, there's nothing there yet.
So whatever was done, if there were any land improvements, anything that would have improved the value of that property, he would have done that piece of it. But as far as construction and all that, there's nothing he can do until it starts happening. But I'll get an answer for it.
I wonder if that's something, because I don't want to, what's the time of date for for occupancy on some of those apartments?
The, the rates, insurance, I'm sorry, the interest rates are really wreaking havoc, and he's gonna, um, he's slowing down, we're pushing out that rent date. He's gonna start doing a lot of the foundations. That'll still get a value, um, applied to it by Jason, but not nearly to what, uh, we expect.
Yes.
Um, he just has to be careful. You know, I speak to him, uh, often.
Okay. Okay, so we don't know.
A year.
A year could be here.
Yes, I asked, I had people asking me when we get in there, and then he said he's a year.
Okay. I mean, that's all I have for revenue. Actually, um, I had one question. On one of the slides, you know, first, first, um, this slide here, the one you just had, you made a comment about.
That one?
Yeah, you made a comment about the state and federal grants are dropping, but that's on a percentage basis, right?
No, these are actual numbers. When, when you look here, um, right up through twenty two, twenty three.
Okay, no, because it only pulls a hundred. We're not, we're not getting hundreds million dollar. Like percentage.
That is, it, I.
It's got to be percentage.
Yes.
I apologize.
No problem. So, um, it does show that there's a small, there's a drop on a percentage basis, right? Because
Right.
Uh, we're, we're actually collecting more revenue, but on a dollar per dollar basis, I think there's another slide you had that actually showed state federal grants, which you made very consistently year over year. It's not like, it's not like we're losing state federal grants. It's just that we need more money, so, uh, they become less significant if we plan on property taxes. I believe that's, that's noted somewhere in in here.
Yeah, we do have the history, and what makes up, I'm sorry, what makes up this chart, there's numbers that make up the percentages, so we would have the data that makes up these percentages.
Nope, we may, we may have found that six here.
Eight sixty eight.
Thank you. Uh, let's face to that slide that you just had.
Yeah, because those aren't numbers.
There was one, there was one slide, Brian, he presented, and we're talking about revenues, and I saw a big, some big jump on state grants.
That's gonna be from eighteen and nineteen to, I'm thinking nineteen and twenty.
Yeah, it almost like doubled. What was?
Well, it starts at two hundred. State and federal grants was two hundred thousand in in two thousand and eighteen, and if you go to two, twelve, twelve, uh, this past year.
We weren't really.
Oh, okay, hold on. This slide here?
Yep.
Okay.
So twenty two, twenty three, it's more than doubled.
Right.
Fiscal year, hoping.
These?
And it hasn't, and it hasn't dropped since.
It's going to.
That's all ARPA?
ARPA is the, the big jumps, uh, at the end, the mill, when you go from five up to to a mill, that is ARPA.
Okay, and when does that drop off?
Pretty soon, right?
No, this, this is, this is not ARPA. I'm sorry to contradict you there.
There is ARPA.
ARPA is in a separate fund altogether. This has to do with, um, I'm try, I'd have to go back to our audit report to see what's in it, but the big jumps in revenue in here. I have to see what that one is. Um, well, that's in this book. The big jumps in revenue have to do with that, um, municipal, um, revenue sharing account, which the governor has eliminated from his budget next year. Those are the two. For two years in a row now, we've been very fortunate to receive some extra revenue than, um, what we had budgeted. I wanted to try to budget it in this year, and I'm being strongly advised not to, because I'm being told it's definitely eliminated there.
Okay, and part of his, um, they, they signed, uh, that was the largest tax cut in our state's history, that was signed in July twenty twenty three, and part of that tax package included additional funding to this, to the towns. So is that additional funding that's coming up, because this was signed in twenty twenty two, and I believe it starts to take effect next fiscal year, is that being considered at all, what we're gonna get?
The additional funding is what was shown in the governor's proposed budget. Um, this is what the governor is proposing, a hundred eighty one thousand dollars extra for Talend in his budget for, um, for the different revenues that they provide to us. Some of this is.
More than a group, that's not.
The motor vehicle one is the big one, and that is part of our general fund, and it does reflect that increase in revenue in our budget next year.
Okay, now, there was, there was more towards, uh, educational programs. That was in the, that was in the, uh, the legislation.
Well, well, what happened was, historically, the ECS grant, um, sorry, almost blown up. Um, the ECS grant several years ago, there was legislation of reallocating those funds. And Talend was supposed to be hit with a three hundred and thirty thousand dollar reduction each year. Then COVID hit, and things were kind of, one year, the governor said he was gonna do it, then he didn't, and we've been in flux for the last few years, and we're, it's still being held level. Whereas by this point in time, if it had gone through with the original ECS reduction plan, we'd be down several million dollars. And as you can see, like, last year, I think they proposed cutting it, um, this, but this is where it ended up for the year that we're in now. But we were being advised that it was going to be cut. So the number that went in our budget was a lower number than the nine point one million. So those extra funds go into your stabilization fund this year. So this year, in twenty four, twenty five, the budget that we're working on, again, the governor has proposed to held it, hold it stable. I put that number in this year, and we just hope that they don't redo that plan to reduce it. But future years out, I have still included it because it's the conservative approach.
Okay. Um, how do we determine how that excess money, which fund that excess money goes into?
There's an ordinance that governs it, the municipal tax stabilization ordinance, strictly for any state revenues, and how that happens.
Okay. Okay, I think we're done with that one.
So this is kind of just playing off of what, uh, Colleen was asking. This is page sixty as well, Lisa. I'll open the top for property taxes for fiscal year twenty three to twenty four, and then into twenty four and twenty five. Is that small drop uh, into twenty four, twenty five? Is that similar to what you were explaining in snapshot from January?
I'm sorry, what, what revenue are you speaking about?
This is property taxes.
Okay, so last year in twenty two, twenty three, our actual is about forty eight point five million. Our new year budget for twenty three, twenty four, that's just the adopted budget, is about fifty point one million. And then with the, um, estimated tax increase for the year coming up twenty four, twenty five, in the proposed budget, it's going up to fifty two point seven, almost fifty three million dollars. Um, that's just the impact of the difference between the budgeted revenues and expenditures.
Okay, because then down at the bottom, the mill rate jumps significantly from six point seven five to one point nine four for the increase.
One point nine four mills.
Okay.
Yes.
I just was asking if that was similar to what Colleen was asking about.
No, Colleen was asking about our collection rates.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions?
I have one. Please go for it. Um, the unassigned fund balance, Lisa, you say we're gonna spend, we're gonna use three hundred seventy eight, or eighty seven, three hundred seventy eight thousand?
Three hundred thousand from regular unassigned fund balance and seventy eight thousand from the municipal tax stabilization fund.
The, the one thing I can't, and you said that by using that, it would bring down the percentage to fifteen and a half.
Right.
Okay, that's the only part I can't, the math isn't mapping for me. So I'm getting sixteen point two five percent that that would bring it down to. What am, what am I not getting?
I'd have to see what you're using for numbers. Um, oh, I wish I kept that page open again. It, it's based on that GAAP number is what changes that estimate.
So I was using, you have a big.
What page are you on?
So I have page one sixteen.
Right, thank you.
The pages are a little different, too.
They are?
Yeah. As far as.
Everybody should have the same page.
By your separate.
Thank you. Yep, one sixteen.
Okay, so I was using the number that's on this sheet, the unassigned fund balance twenty twenty four for the eleven million four sixty, four hundred sixty five thousand, four hundred eighty four dollars. And then I was using the sixty eight million two twenty three, eight eighty six. And that, and that gave that sixteen point eight one, so that, that made sense.
There we go.
Then I dropped, yeah, so then I dropped that eleven million four hundred sixty five thousand and change down that three hundred and seventy eight thou, a thousand dollars. And I calculated percentage, but I'm, I'm getting sixteen point two five percent. Now, what am I getting wrong?
Okay, so if you look at, um, the twenty four, twenty five proposed budget column, okay, so first of all, the twenty three, twenty four estimated has different numbers in there that get you to unassigned fund balance. Then you will see in, um, so in that twenty three, twenty four, you have to show the three hundred thousand that we're using out of fund balance in that year to get that percentage. Then in the following year, I'm only using two hundred thousand. If you see over to the right, we see where it says assigned for a specific future budget. Uh, right, probably about uh, two, three, four, five lines up from the grand total.
Right, hold on. Assignment designation for a specific purpose in budget.
Yeah, that, see, so you see the three hundred thousand there, that's the one that's in this budget, even though it's shown in twenty three, twenty four, because that's where we have to show it in, in the year end entries for accounting purposes.
Okay.
Um, next year, for the time being, I use for the, for the twenty five, twenty six budget, a two and a thousand number, because that's what we've always kind of thrown in there. That number could change next year, but just for for purposes, I'm just showing at that point it would go down by two hundred thousand instead of three hundred thousand.
Right, so we get that eleven four sixty five, which is on.
That's the year before. That's twenty three, twenty four year end.
Okay.
You'll be at sixteen point eight one by taking that out.
Okay.
Then you'll have in the next year, another two hundred thousand come out at the end of that year. It's just how, it's how the accounting works.
Okay.
Um, but it shows you each one of the entries of what impacts your assigned and unassigned numbers.
Okay, so if we use.
So the three hundred thousand is out of there.
Yeah.
Um, and the stabilization fund.
And we're saying the other seventy eight thousand.
Yeah, there's seventy eight thousand out of each year. I gotta check that seven seventy.
I'm just not getting to that fifteen and a half percent. I think that's where I'm trying to get to.
Fifteen point four seven? Is that?
Yeah, essentially, yeah.
Yeah, so the, the way I get there, it, it, it's that last column shows you the fif, see the fifteen point four seven in that last column?
Yes.
Okay. The way to get to that number takes, um, your unassigned fund balance and divides with the, uh, the GAAP expenditures. And the way to get to the unassigned fund balance is, is everything in that right hand column. Um, it shows you where we're thinking total fund balance will be at about twelve point, almost twelve point six million.
Mm-hmm.
And then there's all these other adjustments that take place, whether, you know, what is committed, what is, um, assigned at year end, things like that. That brings you down to your unassigned fund balance, which makes it available for use. So that ten point eight seven with the increase in what GAAP expenditures are, gets you to that fifteen point four seven percent. And if I had the spreadsheet, I could show you, we'd calculate it out.
It, it makes a little bit more sense now. Um.
And again, that's all estimated because we don't know what the final GAAP numbers will be.
Okay.
If you don't mind, I actually have to check, someone's had to check the waiting room to bring people into the meeting online. You are all seen? Waiting room or something?
I hold on one second. How can we get in there?
Might need to stop sharing.
Yeah, we do the stock share for a minute. And there's nobody in there.
Good.
Thank you. I don't see anybody waiting.
Thank you for checking on our link. Counselor, before you finish, those are your questions?
I think, I think I, yeah, I think I got it now.
Okay, I have a few questions as well. Um, up there's a left, um, here we go. Back a few slides on the screen.
Sure.
Which one do you want on? Yeah. I think, no, I, I want to look at this one. Okay, so on the second. Okay, so on the second or third row down, under state and federal grants, uh, between, um, twenty one, twenty two, it's about a half a million dollars, twenty two, twenty three is one point two million.
Yeah.
Uh, the, the MRSA there is.
That's part of it.
Twenty three, what's, the MRSA can't account for all of that.
No, there was, um, and without the audit report in front of me. Part of it had to do with ECS money that we got. Um, because we budgeted a lower amount and I'd have to see which years, I know definitely in this year.
This is not actuals, this is budgeted?
No. This should be budgeted.
Okay, so prior to that is budgeted too, so I'm talking about the increase from fiscal year twenty one, twenty two?
This should be actual. Well, thank you. Bear with me one second, please. I'm not sure if the twenty two, twenty three is budgeted or actual. Usually I update it for actual. Okay, state grants. Yeah, that's actual because I budgeted. Twenty five, two, six. Twenty two, twenty three. That's the budgeted number. We were comparing budgeted to budgeted. Oh, yes, this is all what was budgeted from year to year. That's our, our proposed budgeted, historical budgeted numbers. So yes, that was budgeted because the actual in twenty two, twenty three is a little over one point five million.
Thank you.
Um. And that related to, I think, the ECS money and the, or the MRSA. We may have had the right ECS in that year.
Uh, the, the very colorful chart of trends, uh, by percentage ones, sorry.
That one?
Yeah, does the, is ARPA taken in this chart at all?
No.
Okay, so ARPA is a completely separate fund, not taken into account?
Absolutely. It's a general fund only.
Thank you. Those were all my questions at this point. Are there any other questions on my record?
I just asked one follow up question.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I think I missed it earlier, so I apologize to the council. So the impact of the governor's budget on Tallinn, do we normally use the exact amount the governor gives or we, I know you said conservative, but, or do we do less than more?
In most instances, when we're doing the budget, we will use the governor's numbers. Unless we have other information through CCM, our state legislators, and other sources that are reliable, um, to say, don't use them. But in most cases, we will use the governor's numbers as we vote.
And we always get that after the referendum?
Of course.
So if there's more money than the governor and our representatives work hard and get the town more, could you explain where that money would go?
Sure, that would go into the, through the municipal stabilization tax ordinance, where seventy five percent goes to the MTS fund and the other twenty five percent goes to your capital non-recurring fund.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Any other questions? All right, okay. Thank you, Mr. Rowley.
Thank you, Lisa.
Continue, thank you, Lisa.
Continue.
Run, run me through, Lisa, if you could, two expenditures.
Yeah. There you go.
All right, so, um, let's look at expenditure, um, side of things that we just got done with the revenue. So all, all the way to the right in this column, uh, the percentage, uh, things go up and moving forward, we'll kind of, uh, chart as to why all of those, uh, those, um, increases have gone up from, you know, the four percent of town, uh, four point eight four for the board of ed, we've kind of gone over a lot, but, uh, we'll dig into, to all of this now. Uh, moving forward, Lisa, go ahead. Here's a chart of the town's operational cost, you can kind of see over the years, uh, how it's went. Okay. You can go to the next one, the BOE.
Next.
Yep. Uh, there's some pie charts, the pie charts kind of give you an idea of where we are, uh, uh, in the town here with the, the board of ed being at, uh, just over forty five million. Um, the capital improvements, the debt and, and the town operating that we spoke of before. And this is a, this is a little bit more of a, um, definition, if you look at the, 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 the left side, the bottom four there on the left side, are really the big ones on the town side from, uh, public safety, government, public works and, uh, debt, but again, uh, education is sixty, sixty nine point three five percent of our expenditures. Moving on, this is, this is the town now, uh, and, you know, a, a more, you know, exact look at the town and, and our budgets and the percentage is again, uh, public works, generally government and public safety are really the, the big ones here, uh, taking out the board of education, looking at just the town. Our expenditure drivers, again, debt service, uh, increased by fourteen point three nine percent or six hundred and seventy six thousand, uh, due to the ESCO pay, uh, payment and capital improvements, supported by general fund increased by seventy seven, uh, almost seventy eight thousand dollars. So the, the, the big expenditure drivers here, the garbage pickup, um, was a big one for us this year, the recycling fees, the tipping fees, uh, we still, we still have in there of one budgeted free bulk, uh, pickup or they'll waive the fee for the bulk pickup, but then, um, we have to, uh, do the, the, it's usually around twenty thousand dollars it costs us with the tonnage, uh, for the bulk pickup and that's what it costs the town. Uh, so that went up a lot, seventy five, uh, per ton for recycling and one ten, a ton for, uh, general refuse. Uh, it, it, it went up a lot, but I believe counsel, this is one of your first things you voted on, was the contractor, was it, this was prior to getting here? All right, so Katie and Colleen were here when, uh, this, this contract came up. Um, this is a big deal, uh, around the state, around the country, and everyone's are going up. We looked at a lot of things, uh, when, when settling on this, um, this contract with Casella. And we, we like our rates compared to other towns, uh, I think we did pretty well. Moving on, salary.
Colleen, I'm sorry, could you just tell us what tipping fee means?
Yeah, Mike, are you there, you want to explain it? Well, there's more, there's more coming up at the end, yeah, garbage is at the end, so if you want to, Michael, that, Mike, we'll get you at the end.
Thank you.
All right, so, uh, moving on, salaries obviously, um, have gone up, insurance, uh, went up. The fuel costs, uh, went up, these are the, these are the, really the big increases. Um, the recycling, uh, was a big one, uh, the equipment rental, uh, went up. And then the, uh, debt class, uh, the, the debt reclassification of UCF, uh, from the board of ed and the town was the big one. Salaries, we settled the, uh, settled out a couple of contracts, uh, with, with the union, so, um, I believe we only have one more left to settle and that's the fire department, uh, before we have to go back and start looking at, uh, other ones down the road. Okay, so the proposed mill rate is, uh, at three point, uh, thirty nine point two seven, that's an increase of one point nine four mils compared to the current mill rate of three seven point three three. This is a look at our grand list, uh, growth here, uh, and in the tax impact of the average, a low, middle, uh, little and higher, uh, assessed homes. The grand list change, point sixty six percent, again, modest, uh, but still, uh, growth as we went from, uh, one point three five to one point, uh, uh, three six billion in town. This is, this is, and this next chart is, is great for everybody in town, it's a very personal chart, you know, you hear people say, you know, I can afford this, you know, they can afford this, the, those, it's, really, it's personal chart, you look at it, you see if you can afford it. Uh, but for us here at the table, we also have to think about, um, everyone, so this is, this is kind of a, an estimate chart of, uh, the tax difference in what you'll pay, it's very handy.
Page was that, Brian?
What's that?
Page.
Ooh, there, there's not numbers on this.
Oh, okay.
For the presentation?
Yeah, that's, that's in the presentation.
Was it in the binder?
Yes.
It's got it in there.
Yep, it's in there, it's probably under the revenue section, I'm thinking, or the budget fund somewhere. To be the exact same chart.
Sorry, I saw it before.
Yeah, it's in here because this, this particular slide was taken right from the budget book. Okay, page is twelve.
Good? Awesome, all right. Okay, this is, this, uh, really the, the bottom line is a six year average increase of taxes.
Brian, are you gonna explain that page?
Which one?
Eleven.
Yes, so this, this is basically, you look up, uh, your assessed value of your house and they, look at, these aren't exact values, you see it goes, you know, two hundred, two hundred and fifty, three hundred, three hundred thousand, uh, or your market value, and then you look all the way to the right, and this is the difference, or basically the ballpark increase of what you can expect to pay in, in taxes with this proposed budget.
So this, sorry, real quick, so let's just use, because I, we reached this number here, it's seventy percent of the true market value because we're taxed, obviously, for, for assessment purposes, you take seven percent of the value, so this is, this is building in that seventy percent.
Yes.
Yes.
Number. So let me just utilize this here, three hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Are we open to questions?
No, I don't think we are open to questions. Um, is there another one after this, is there a break coming soon that we could ask question?
Or you can ask at any point, but, um, yeah, I'm, I only got a couple more pages here before we start. Uh, I think we're gonna, uh, jump into the building and.
All right, can you finish these couple of pages? Let's finish these couple of pages and then you can go.
Sure.
Go for questions.
Okay. Okay, so, yeah, looking over, looking over the past five years, uh, the column all the way to the right shows, uh, that the, uh, the tax increases, um, on average, and, uh, this is a six year average household increase down at the bottom at seventy two, uh, point three eight, you see there's been some drops and fluctuations, uh, Lisa, do you want to explain quickly what would cause those drops?
It, um, for example, in this year, it was a revaluation here, so the property value, as you can see, um, the property value of the average household back then is one eighty eight. Um, but then the property value went down to one seventy eight and you'll see it stay stable till our next revaluation. So the differential is based on the property valuation of what went down there. In here, we had a drop in the mill rate of a point five three mils. Um, so again, the, even though the values of the property stays the same, the taxes went down because we cut the mill rate in that particular year. Then in these two years, here's the one that's being proposed, last year, the mill rate went up a point seven five. And that for this average assessed value home, that's what the, the value went up in that one year. So your overall average of all six years is about a seventy two dollar and thirty eight cents. Increase average for you.
Okay, um, so, moving on. So this is a lot of the, a lot of what we've already covered, uh, the, the proposed, proposed.
Sorry, I'm gonna stop you before we get into.
Yep.
This and we'll talk about tax things.
Yep.
From the past couple of pages. So, counsel person, you, you have a question?
I do. Um, so Brian, it's for page twelve, back to that chart. So just using three hundred fifty thousand dollars, um, as my example. Uh, that's going all the way over to the right, if your home is estimated to be three hundred fifty thousand dollars, you're gonna, you're gonna see a, a total increase of six hundred and seventy nine dollars.
That's, that's the assessed value.
Just for this year.
Yeah.
That's what the increase would be.
Yes.
For the assessed value at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yep.
Not for the market value of the house. If you want to look at the market value of the home.
Well, the market value of a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar home is five hundred thousand.
The market value of a home that is assessed at three hundred fifty thousand is five hundred thousand, that's correct.
Right, that's what I'm reading.
Yes.
But I'm asking the total number that you would see as an increase in your monthly payment, paying your mortgage, six hundred and seventy nine dollars.
Annual.
Annual.
So it would go from thirteen thousand sixty six dollars to thirteen thousand seven hundred and forty.
Is there any way that folks on a fixed income budget could see how that be displayed over twelve month period?
You can divide by, if you could divide by twelve, um, I guess.
Is there a calculator online?
There is a calculator online, um, one of the things what we're looking at is the, uh, vision database. If you don't have your tax bill from last year to get your assessed value, um, there was a link there, we're getting that fixed.
Okay.
Um, but you would take your assessed value from your tax bill last year, it should be the same this year unless you did any improvements to your property. You would pop that into the tax calculator, which it can be found on the budget pages as well as the tax collectors page. And we've got the new proposed mill rate in there and it'll, and it'll calculate it out. You could put that dollar, you could put the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar number in there.
Is there a way that we can make that process for folks that are asking this question a little easier? There's some folks, you know?
You see it as it can come.
Because I have people asking me, me, you know, I have residents asking me that question, about how they, how they could do that based on this proposed budget.
Yeah.
So I just want to give them the accurate information for you maybe the right way.
Would it be possible to put up step by step instructions for someone to look up their assessed value, they're already up there?
Yeah, everything is on the webpage, there's links where they can look up their assessed value. Um, there's the dollar amount, it, it says what to put in, what column and what to put in, and I wish I could get it here to show you. Um, but it'll show where you put the three hundred and fifty thousand in each, each year, and it'll calculate what that number is, so these are just ballpark, you know, in fifty thousand increments, um, down this area, but if you want your exact, say if your house was three seventy six, two fifty.
Yeah, right.
You could put that number in yourself into the calculator that's online and it'll ca, calculate the exact amount. And the instructions are all there, step by step, but if there's any people having difficulty with using it, by all means, they can call my office and we can walk them through it. having difficulty with using it, by all means, they can call my office and we can walk them through it.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, Kate, that was kind of what I was going for there. Um thanks, Ryan.
Those are all your questions?
Yeah.
Councilor, actually.
Um I may have missed it, but do we know what the average assessed value of the of homes are in all assessed value?
Yes, that was that was um that's part of let me get down there. Here's your average, your average household is one seventy eight, eight seventy for the assessed value.
Sure, yeah. So that going back to that chart on twelve.
See here, that's your median.
Yep. So going back to page twelve, so that's that would see a three hundred and forty seven dollar a year increase for about twenty nine dollars a month. Okay, thanks.
There any other questions about this tax?
Just just to clarify, because I know this question has come up frequently. When we're looking when we're talking about taxes and how they're calculated, it's based on the assessed value of your property, correct?
Yes.
And that's roughly seventy percent of your market value?
Right, and and it's just to even complicate it more, it's seventy percent of the market value at the last revaluation that the town did.
Okay.
So your market value now may be a million dollars where back in twenty twenty it was eight hundred thousand. It's that eight hundred thousand number of market value that's being used in tax bill. Until we have our next revaluation, which will be coming up next year, um the numbers stay consistent.
One twenty four.
Right.
But the um so now we're still using those values from the last investment.
Right.
Okay, so just a point of clarification, if we had the average home value, market value, is two hundred and fifty five thousand and change, that's not the number we're using to calculate our taxes.
Absolutely not.
We're using the assessed value, which is that one seventy eight, eight hundred and seventy. That's the number we use when we calculate taxes.
Right.
Okay.
And that's the number that's on your tax bill when you get your tax bill. If you keep a copy, your assessed value is is in that bill.
So and based off of this chart, if we're using the average home value for the town of Tallinn, it we're we're looking at an increase as the proposed proposed budget stands, sorry, I've been late. It was the three hundred and forty seven dollars yearly is what the average, I think it was back on the last slide.
Yeah. This one here is three eighty four for the average household with this budget that's coming up. That's the average increase.
That's the average increase.
For your average home in with this budget that's being proposed. That's not, you know, depending on what you all do.
Those numbers don't match.
Yeah, I'm confused because that says three forty seven, or that's just the difference?
I'm sorry, um here's your three forty seven that's on that next page.
Yeah.
Okay. The next page just refers to the average household.
Okay.
Oh, wait a minute.
Right.
Three eighty four. Yeah, that's where I'm confused because those two numbers are not the same.
One seventy one, two fifty five.
Seven oh twenty four is the same.
I need to check this for the calculation on that. It should be three, I'm pretty sure three forty seven. Check.
It's the twenty three, twenty four number that's different.
Ah, the mill rate.
I think that's three forty seven number was correct.
Thirty seven, thirty three, thirty nine, twenty seven. Sixty six, seventy seven. That's where it is. This number, when the mill rate uh changed, because it was originally in the slide from last year, because when they pulled the slides over, it was a higher mill rate when this presentation was done last year. This thirty seven, thirty three should be sixty six, seventy seven is the right number for that. Sixty six, seventy seven. This should have been sixty six, seventy seven.
Okay.
This number this number is wrong. We got to fix it, and I apologize for that.
The number in our book is correct.
So the
Yes.
So the three hundred and forty seven dollars difference.
Yeah, this should be three forty seven.
Okay. So what we're talking about is three hundred and forty seven dollars difference a year for the average home in Tallinn, which comes out to twenty eight dollars ninety one cents a month, if people want the monthly math.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I don't have my calculator handy, but I'm just saying, yeah, if you take three forty seven.
I divided it by twelve for transparency. It comes out to twenty eight point nine one six six.
We got a um I think when the slide was copied, they it didn't change.
So that three eighty four should be three forty seven is what we're saying.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Lisa.
Sorry for that.
It's all right.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, any questions? So there's been some uh there's been some comments that come in the town council about um the value increase in homes that's going to hit for the next for twenty twenty four, when the assessment meeting, who values the product. And the concern is that um the uh what's the assessment date, October first, right? So October first, twenty twenty four.
So that'll be the twenty five, twenty six.
Right, so let's say, or I can say that the increase is forty percent. So everyone's going to see their values, their home values increased by forty percent. The concern that people are talking about is that now you're going to apply this mill rate of point three nine I said about three nine two seven to a now increased forty percent valuation of their home, which means that there's a huge collection of revenue. So I think can we just discuss how that how the mill rate is adjusted or
Sure.
not adjusted. So it's not adjusted, but how that would impact the mill rate.
So we're dealing with the fiscal year twenty five, twenty six right now. We will redo this process again next year with the rebound numbers. So what we do every year is we look at the uh town manager's recommended expenditures and balance it back to
We're adjusting.
revenues and propose a an expenditure number that goes to referendum and then set the mill rate as appropriate to meet that number.
Right, so.
So it gets reevaluated next year.
I just wanted that sort of discussed so that there's a point of clarity there um that people understand that this this thirty nine point two seven is a fixed number until the next year. It gets it gets recalculated based on what we advised by referendum.
Absolutely.
Okay, and again, um it it all depends on where the revaluation process goes. If there's a shift between commercial, residential, different size homes, you know, if if everything, say if all the numbers go up, but the the disparity or I'm trying, can't think of the right word, but say if it's the same value, only a higher number within there, then your mill rate will probably go, say if the grand list goes up, but the dispersion of single family homes, commercial, all stay relatively the same in the result, then the the impact of the mill rate will probably go down if that's the case. It's all going to depend on how your revaluation goes and how um you know.
And that would be the expense or
Well, that's part of your commercial, that your stamping is um
Yeah.
part of all that, you know, and it's all going to depend on where the shift is and the values.
In detail next year.
Right, that's that's not going to affect this budget. And again, um the mill rate could very well go down. It could go up. It all depends on where your budget is, as you said.
Yeah. That is your question? Any other questions on tax numbers? Okay, thank you, Mr. Foley, for letting us interrupt you again. I think we're on slide thirty one.
Right, all right. So this is the this is a recap of the board event, which uh Dr. Will is going to cover extensively here. Uh the 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 top pages we've already covered. Uh the the next paragraph talks about our health insurance. Obviously, uh last year, we had a horrible year. Uh this year, it it leveled out thankfully uh or came back to to normal. Uh it talks about the salary increases uh and the bus contract uh affected by uh gas and diesel, which we talked about earlier. Uh if you move to the next page, you can see the payroll uh being the largest uh increase uh that affects the board event. Uh Dr. Boyle is going to get into that much, much more. Um if you're ready, I'm 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 ready to go into planning and development in the building department unless you want to stop here.
Are we're gonna do Dr. Will later? Is that you you mentioned Dr. Will was going to do it later?
Yes.
Lunch one. Okay. Yes, let's go into.
That's correct, right, Dr. Will?
There's there's much more than you want.
Thank you.
Lunch one? All right, so let's move into our uh planning and development and uh building department. Uh the 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 um really a success story in the town, and they've been reshaped. Um it's just such a great staff from where it was a decade ago. Uh and and what they uh provide, there's some uh obviously planning development, our engineers are out of there. Uh our public health services uh are down there as well. We'll talk about Eastern Highlands here. Uh as we have to move along and and as councilor remembers, Eastern Highlands was here, I believe, uh last council or a couple councils ago. Um and then we'll we'll cover the inlands and wetlands, planning and zoning, conservation, agricultural, ZBA uh and the design advisory board all underneath these um this this department. Engineering, um total budget seventy one thousand. Uh this decreased by four and a half percent from last year. Um there have been some changes made. So um the the cost of engineering hopefully uh stays down and uh we'll continue to see some improvement uh moving through the years. Uh building inspection uh services, boy, our our building inspector really does a lot. Um he does a lot more than 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 is listed on this page. Um and he's and he's training one of his staff to uh be basically an assistant uh inspector uh for him. Uh they provide a lot of uh assistance, obviously to residents and building code and businesses um in regards to uh all the the permit process and such. But I also pride support the historic district, the light uh review committee. Uh and he is the appointed light officer, and he really does a great job with that as well um in regards to vetting those. So we don't really hear too much about light in our town. He does the best he can when he can. Uh the 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 budget for the building inspection service is one fifty six. Uh that's an increase of four thousand, mostly uh from payroll. Uh and then some of the online permitting system uh went up a thousand dollars uh. And that's that's the big increase for there. The next page is a line by line ad item line line by line um items for the the building department. And it'll give you a comparison from previous years uh to where we are this year.
Thanks.
Want to stop for questions there?
Yes, we'd like I'd like to stop for questions. Are there any questions there on building inspection? And and I guess engineering? Is that in there too?
Yeah.
So building inspection and engineering.
Engineering, uh they because it's just that one month, yeah, it doesn't have one of these pages.
No questions for building inspection and engineering? Okay.
Just one quick question. So do memberships, what the increase in duty memberships, not a big number, but I was curious, like why I went from one forty five in the actuals to a small number?
Yeah, uh so the they the the theirs are the decade Building Officials Association, International Code Council, uh the CCM renewal and in New England Certified Builders, uh I believe is what it is.
But CCM uh was the bigger addition this year, the certification of the assistant.
Well, there's just around.
I think.
We're certifying an additional clerk.
Plus an extra person.
Who's being certified. So I think we can keep going. Thank you.
All right, planning and development. Two hundred and fourteen thousand dollar or uh roughly two hundred and fourteen, seven hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars, an increase of uh just over seventeen hundred. Uh both reflecting negotiated raises being the biggest impact uh on that. Um there was we moved some money around, but it doesn't really have a a big effect on the budget, and that's at least you want to talk to the the salary, I believe, for the um staff down there. We moved right up one budget to the other, or is it um?
Yeah.
Mike?
Oh, either one of us, even David, could could address it. Um basically, what you'll see here is do you want?
David can address it, yes.
Hi there, hi, uh yeah, David Burkin. Um so yeah, so the the intent here is to maintain our our current staffing mix. Um we've had an assistant planner position in the budget for uh the last several years. Until three years ago, we had an assistant planner. Um the idea here is to uh fill the assistant planner position finally with um our current executive secretary. Um we would then uh continue to use the current consultant that we're using in lieu of the executive secretary. Um because the duties that the executive secretary actually perform are are more consistent with the assistant planner job description. So uh and 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 that still uh leaves us with a lower payroll impact and we have two years' guilt, so.
Are there any questions on the planning and zoning services? Go ahead.
Quick question. Uh I noticed that you have no travel expenses through the past three years, but now you have five hundred dollars in travel expenses, what what's causing them?
Yeah, so so last year, because the national planning conference was in Elise, a relatively close, I I went for that. Normally, I I don't, but.
Any other questions on planning and zoning services? Is the is this budget sufficient to meet your program objectives and goals for fiscal year twenty five?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
All right. Uh as you know, we don't have a talent uh Department of Public Health. We uh hire out to Eastern Highland Health District. Um that comes with the cost. This year, we're budgeting eighty six thousand four hundred and twenty eight dollars. It's an increase of two and a half percent or two thousand and ninety dollars. Um I do want to say um we are getting a lot more out of uh Eastern Highlands this year um than than we've had with their they've jumped on board with um the uh salt in the wells, the well water uh issue, and we're going to need them a lot moving forward, especially if we're going to frame out some uh controls on how and when you can put a water softening system on your house, which we think we all uh we at least needs to be explored. Uh they're providing us with some some free services as it is in regards to this, so um it is a two and a half percent increase. Uh any questions on that?
Any questions, buddies from health?
It's just, so that's just a membership fee, like that's just what it is.
Yes.
Okay, that's it.
Councilor?
Brian, do we know how much we save by using Eastern Highlands instead of having like our own health department? I assume it would be as.
I don't have an estimate on that, but we have we have their entire services of the health department, and there's a lot um to include legal as well. Um I can't imagine what it would cost to have our own um health department. Um, I can't imagine what it would cost to have our own, um, health department.
Yeah, so it's a good, it's a, it's a definitely savings for the town, going this route.
Not only that, they give us somebody, so we have somebody here, forty hours a week, out doing our septic, um, and our inspections and such, too. Um, so, so, is it forty hours a week each day?
Yeah, it's a little bit less than forty, but it is most of the time.
Um, so, and, and not every town has that, so, they're, they're, we are there, I believe, one of their, their biggest towns, but, um, we also have somebody staffed here, it's worked out well.
Funny, yes. I have two questions, uh, in the budget book, I'm on page one ninety-one, it says that Hollywood is our, is our standard tier, and I think that's outdated. So, if, do you think for the town council budget, we could get that updated, please?
Yep.
Thank you. And, and Brian, um, I don't know if you or I are the right person to answer this question, but i- is this budget sufficient to meet the program objectives and goals for fiscal year twenty-five?
I, again, I'm happy with Eastern Highland, I haven't always been, um, I'm happy with them right now, so yes.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on, um, planning and development, the Commissions, uh, Inlands and Wetlands Commission, their budget is three thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars, an increase of a hundred and eighty dollars. Um, again, you're gonna, you're gonna see some of the definitions of those, uh, in, in the charts moving forward from here. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, budget's eight thousand, nine hundred dollars, an increase of three thirty, uh, from the prior year, um, and, uh, recording clerk services, uh, was, was, I believe, the beef of that. Um, the Agricultural Commission, uh, budget fifteen hundred dollars, uh, increase from a thousand. Uh, that's, that is really, um, something out of Health Services, when they come, we can talk about that, but that is the, um, Talon Fresh Program, uh, increased money for the Talon Fresh Pro, Program to use at the Talon Greens Farmers Market, so, a lot of people, uh, I believe it's a senior, is that a senior-only program, can you, you remember?
It's, it's not senior-only, it's for qualifying.
Qualifying, got it. Uh, Zoning Board of Appeals, uh, no change at, at three thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars, and the, the Conservation Commission budget at, uh, just under three thousand dollars, no change as well. Moving forward, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
So, I was gonna say, and there, there's definitions, I, or, line-by-line items, but Dave can also answer any changes, if you have any questions, any changes, go ahead.
Does anyone have any questions about those commissions, Inland Wetlands, Planning and Zoning, Agriculture, ZBA, Conservation? That's what I'm sure.
Uh, so, one, one quick question, so, I noticed the actuals for twenty-twenty-three was less than a thousand dollars, and now we've gone up to four thousand dollars.
What, what are you talking about?
Sorry, ZB, Z, um, one Board of Appeal. So, can we get, can we get actuals for the current year?
Which, sorry, which, um?
ZBOI, newspaper.
This one here?
Yes, there are eight, six, and four, for an actual year versus a budget year, I'm just curious as to why we jumped up two thousand dollars? I mean, so we have to be considering that, like, it was small stuff, like?
Right, so it was three thousand, two years prior to, so why did it go down, um, in twenty-twenty-three so much, I guess, is, is the, the, the question there, right?
Yeah, and then go up over fifteen hundred, and then that two years.
And it looks like to be in advertising is where that money, um, is temporary help, um, meetings, yeah, and advertising is the increases there.
What are we doing for advertising?
So, yeah, so, so we have public legal notices for any applications that come in, and those come out of the advertising budget, we, we tend to estimate on the high side, because we don't know how many variance applications we'll receive in any given year, uh, if we were to receive, uh, you know, a, a couple dozen, I could end up with the, the twenty-seven fifty number the week, we pay the General Enquirer for those legal notices.
Can we get actuals for the current year, see what's in the current?
Yeah, we can.
You, you're gonna see a lot of that, um, and at the state level, NOCCM's trying to change the, having to file it in the newspapers, the price has gone up and up and up, um, and readership is not, uh, as you can imagine, and, but coming up with some sort of social media policy and such, uh, we're hoping the state will come forward. Katie, do you know anything about that? They're probably not gonna touch it.
They haven't touched it in years, it's been, uh, every year, for years.
And, and, you know, at every CCM, the annual meeting, everyone's complaining about these newspaper, uh, fees, but that's the ways, uh, the laws are written in regards to, uh, FY, that we gotta put it out there.
Good?
Yes.
Any other questions? Uh, I have a couple questions, I know last year, uh, when we went through a, a lot of these, um, committees, uh, like ZBA, uh, we talked about the temporary helpline, which I believe is the recording clerk? Is that correct? Um, and we talked about, uh, working with our town clerk on potential savings on clerking has, uh, but I don't see any changes to the budget, so I'm assuming no cost-saving measures were included?
Not every commission has, or he, uh, uses one of those.
Yes.
Um, but it's, it's getting, no, is the answer.
Okay. Um, and, and specifically, in terms of advertising, um, why don't application fees cover the advertising?
So, the way that it works, my understanding is that the, uh, application fees go into the same pool of revenue as, as building permits and things of that nature, which then feedback into the general fund, which then feedback, so it, it's reflected as revenue elsewhere in the budget, yeah.
So, are, um, application fees cover the cost of advertising?
They do, uh, for, for planning and zoning, zoning where it deals with weapons, yeah.
Good to know, thank you. And so, I guess, one more question, are these budgets for all of these sufficient to cover the program objectives and goals for the next fiscal year?
Yes.
Thank you.
I wanna say that they've done well in raising, raising the revenue that they've generated for the town as well, that all this building, uh, planning, they're selling a, a good job in the last five years, and really, um, increasing business. Alright, ready?
What, did we go over the agricultural portion?
No.
We did.
Yes.
The extra, but I told you this, though?
By extra five hundred is for the mark, the, the Farmer's Market, uh, basically.
I actually had a couple questions.
Go ahead.
If you don't mind me saying that, okay, so, and I should know this question, because I intended to read, what, um, what's the fifteen hundred dollars, for the, it's just for the advertising to, for the?
So, so the extra thousand dollars that is being requested by the Agriculture Commission is intended to, uh, provide for an expansion of the Talon Fresh Program to be used at the Green Farmer Market, so, right now, uh, the, the Talon Fresh Program, so that it provides a, a twenty-dollar voucher to qualified folks to, uh, go purchase fresh, fresh produce at, at local, uh, farm stands. Uh, the idea with the thousand dollars is we would, uh, double that value for folks that do their shopping at the Green Farmer Market.
Yeah, it's a great program, um, and I noticed, too, that you, you originally asked for four thousand dollars, and the town manager cut it down to fifteen hundred, what, what was the initial request to cover?
Yeah, so the initial request had to do with, uh, enhanced mowing at the Campbell Farm property, so, um, the, the, the current lease for Campbell Farm covers, uh, really mowing of, of the farm fields and things like that, um, there has been expressed a need by some neighbors to, uh, to maybe do some enhanced maintenance on the property, that we estimate it costs around twenty-five hundred dollars, uh, the town collects around fifteen hundred dollars a year in revenue from, uh, from the lease, which we can expend towards that, offset a lot of that, um, and then, uh, you know, we can, we can probably figure out how to make up the difference, uh, otherwise, but, yeah.
I have one, make some points here, I wanna look at that lease again, that's a steal, um, the storage alone in the barn is worth, uh, that much money. I wanna rent it out at that price, um, it's, it's, it's fantastic, so we'll, we'll look to rework that. Uh, the, the, the property is getting more maintenance than it ever had in, in a while, and it really had gone in rightful concern by the neighbors, um, up until about two years ago, and, um, it's, DPW's done a, a great job of uh, cutting it back, and then some volunteer help as well, and getting it back, and getting the pond cleared out, too, down there, where they're often.
Okay.
Um, looking at, there, there's some water, well water issues, I'm sorry, they wanna put a well in there as well.
Right.
I didn't mean to say it like that. Um, they, I think they were considering asking for the money for the well in their budget, and, uh, we're, we're trying to, like, heck, everywhere we can to get it through a grant, um.
Okay, yeah, no, that's my element, so the attempt is to try to get a grant then?
And we came close on a technicality in that the town couldn't apply for the grant for that, and a farmer could, but a farmer renting it from the town, um, couldn't, is what we, we betted out, and this, this grant, we're still looking.
Okay.
Thanks. And they do a great job, the Agricultural Commission.
Yeah, they do.
With the Farmer's Market, with so much stuff, so, um, they do fantastic work, I don't wanna not say that.
Morant?
David, there's one other question, um, I, I thought of it when we talked about the advertising budget, do the fees that we charge for permits, are they pretty much in line with similar towns, where we, sort of, you know?
Yeah, yeah, so we, we took a look at that about a year and a half ago, and we, we adjusted our fee schedule for commercial development to be more in line with, with other towns, because we were a little bit on the high end, so.
Okay, and for residential, we're pretty comparable.
We're very comparable.
Okay, thanks.
Look, I have one more question, too, sorry, um, on the Conservation Commission, um, where does the tree-cutting money go? Is that part of this budget?
So, there's a permanent conservation fund, so that money goes into.
Okay, and is that we have to pay for some sort of analysis for that?
Yep.
Yeah, do we, we pay?
Yeah, so we, we have paid, and the checks have all cleared and everything balanced, I believe we earned a profit of around fifty-nine hundred dollars between the, the costs that we paid for all the studies and the analysis and the, versus the amount of revenue we got for the trees, so.
And that's all in a different budget, that's not reflected here in front of us with the operating?
Exactly, exactly, it, it doesn't expire in many.
Thank you, that was my question. Okay. Looks like you're safe to keep going.
I feel safe.
Okay.
Uh, now I'm gonna bring in, uh, Mike Wilkinson, uh, and he's gonna, he's gonna go through the, uh, solid waste, thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Uh, he's gonna go through the solid waste, uh, um, I guess, price increase, uh, the, the whole, the whole process, uh, that we went through, go ahead, Mike. Mike, you there, can you hear me?
Sure, so, um, yeah, just to sum up, so we're in the seventh year of a co- Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep.
I'm muted now.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Alright, alright, so, um, we're in the seventh year of our, uh, contract, the last year that we signed seven years ago, um, which was under very good terms for the town, so, um, our new five-year contract is kind of catching up with the market. So, uh, I don't know if any of you follow the recycling market, but, um, there really is no recycling market right now. Um, uh, the market collapsed about four or five years ago, when China stopped taking recycling, so where we used to get paid twenty-five dollars a ton for recycling, now we have to pay for it. So, um, and also, on the trash side, uh, the cost of uh, disposal of trash has gone up, because there's less places, both in Connecticut and the region, to dispose of trash, so, um, so basically, our new contract is just kind of catching up with what the market rates are. Um, uh, so that's why there's a jump this year, it does balance out next year, it flattens out after this first year. Um, but there's a, as Brian mentioned earlier, there's an increase in the tipping fees, and what the tipping fee is, to answer, uh, Katie's question from earlier, that's just the cost per ton of, just to dispose of, either recycling, regular trash, or bulky waste, so that's a per-ton amount that the town pays, based on how much, uh, uh, tons we, uh, dispose of. So, um, uh, the, the new contract does include, which we've done before, and you may be, uh, may be aware of, is we do a free bulky wa- waste, uh, pickup each year for residents, so as part of this contract, the vendor has agreed to not charge us for the pickup cost of that, which saves us about sixteen thousand dollars, we still have to pay for the tonnage amount, but, um, they will do the, uh, actual collection of it for free as part of the agreement going forward, so that's one of the things we do. Um, and that, the cost of the actual tonnage is in the budget, um, so, um, so that kind of sums it up, if anyone has any questions, please let me know.
Any questions, Council Morant?
A good point question, um, I, it said that the, uh, we're, we're switching the bulk, bulky waste tonnage expense to the operating budget for next year, when it previously been in the capital account, is there a particular reason for that?
Uh, there's, the, the, all the money in the capital account was depleted. We had, we had put some, we had put some money aside a long time ago. What's that?
You're going, nevermind, you can, you're explaining.
So, yeah, it's just been depleted, so we, okay, um, yeah, that, so that, that capital account has been depleted, so we had to put it into the operating account, it just, we had been using it, and it just ran out.
So, we previously set aside money in the capital account, and that's now gone, so now it has to go to the operating budget?
Yeah, and it wasn't meant for that, we originally put it aside for, we thought, you know, we might have to, uh, replace totes, that they might not last very long, but they really have, so, um, we eventually redirected that money to, to pay for other things, including the, 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 um, bulky waste, uh, tonnage, but eventually, the money, like I said, uh, you know, uh, went away.
Thank you.
Any good questions, Council Morant?
Brian, did you mention that we'd be reopening an hour ago, would that be, uh, effective to cut some of the bulk that would be having come out, or?
I certainly didn't mention that, I, no.
You had said that.
The only thing we're exploring is partnering with Stafford, um, and, and their transfer station, um, but that ran, and Mike, there are a few staff, ran some pickups with that, uh, I have asked them to relook into that.
Okay.
Okay, no, please, ask questions, so we're good?
What, uh, what's the cost of the hazardous waste program that we participate in?
Uh, it's about, it's about, uh, I wanna say it's, uh, it's about fourteen thousand dollars.
And has that been pretty consistent, sixteen thousand?
Yeah.
Are you got?
Yeah, I, I was, I was looking at this year, it's going up, but, um, yeah, um, no, it's go, I mean, it's, 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 it goes up, it depends on who's in, there's a consortium of towns, so it really depends on how many towns are in it, who's, what's their paying, it's based on, uh, population, and also, what gets disposed of, so it's been relatively flat, but it's going up slightly this year, um.
Okay, is that, what is that based on, is that just based on weight? That we, how they determine their charging?
Uh, uh, it's based on population mainly, the main fees are based on, that's where the main fees come.
Okay, um, my second question is, the, uh, we have an annual electronic recycling program, it typically is at the high school. Um, is the town involved in that anymore, or is that a private organization that?
We set it up.
Nope.
Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, no, the, 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 uh, the state requires that every town has some plan for electronics, so, um, the t- town coordinates two, uh, two events, um, each year, um, one in this, one in April and one in October, um, 'cause that, per state law, it has to be free for the resident. So, um, it doesn't cost us anything, but we just coordinate with one of the approved vendors with the state, and they come in, do that, uh, at the high school. Uh, the, the one that is coming up on April twenty-seventh, uh, this year, uh, in the spring.
Okay, does that vendor make money off of this?
Does what's that?
Does the vendor make money off of that program?
I didn't hear the question, I'm sorry.
Vendor, you're really choppy, Mike, does the vendor?
Well, they get the recycling, they get the recycling, they can, they, no, the, the vendor, oh, the, the vendor, the vendor gets the recycling, so they can, they can take apart the recycling, they can use the, you know, there's obviously uh, precious metals in recycling, so, you know, they, they, so, they obviously need to make money from it, 'cause it's a, there's no cost to the town for it, or we don't have to pay for it.
State doesn't pay for that either, but so the vendor? State doesn't pay for that either. But so the vendors basically taking the product, trying to make some.
Correct. Yeah, correct.
We tried to piggyback a shredding event. I think we did last year in the same time as well and for, for convenience and the search team helps as well.
Any other questions? Good, Joe?
Yes.
You're good. Any questions? I think I have a, I have a question. So um what has the town done to explore other options for cost savings on refuse and recycling?
So Mike did a lot of research into what other towns uh are paying and doing. Um when, if, if you mean like who are raiding uh that sort of thing. Are you talking about like what Coventry is doing with their um their, their basically food waste or West Hartford has or that type of program?
Well, those things.
Um as far, we've looked into, you know, we, we worked with Coventry and, and um explored the grants and such. We just don't have the farm infrastructure uh in our town uh for that uh, that type of program here. Um and then in regards to, and Mike did a lot of research in regards to other towns and in looking at the price and what we were getting from Costella.
Um but not every town incorporates refuse and recycling collection in their town operating budget. Is that correct?
Uh like, for example, what do you?
Uh for example, when I lived in Coventry.
You paid for it on your own?
Yes.
We could explore that. Uh you know, it'd be a, a big lift. Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, so let's back up and really, if you wanna get into this discussion. So let's back up and let, let's go back ten years. So if you've lived in town, you know, we've done a bunch of things to try to limit our increases in recycling and refuse. So uh we changed to automatic pickup. We went to single stream. We went to every other week for uh picking up tr- trash instead of every week. Um so those are the things we did to limit our bu- budget. So our budget this year is actually lower than it was ten years ago. So we have a negative uh uh rate on our increase over ten years at our budget. Unfortunately for us, the, the, the overall market in both recycling and trash is not good. As I mentioned, it's just not good. All the magic bullets that, that towns use to reduce their budget, there really isn't anyone now, anything now. The state is trying to look into things to try to um increase capacity for disposals to reduce that cost. Uh but that's gonna take four or five years probably to be implemented. Um you know, uh there's really no magic bullet that we have that we could do. But the good thing is, over the last ten years, we haven't even increased our budget. It's actually dollars in two thousand nineteen. Um so it's a great story over the last ten, twelve years, but we're kind of at the point where um we're starting to run into market forces more than anything we can do. Um some towns do pay for, pay, pay for play, but that's very difficult uh in a town without a transfer station. It's also very difficult to take it out of the mill rate if you don't have a transfer station because it doesn't give residents an option to throw out. Um so um you know, we're always talking to Costella about new things we can do, but um you know, right now we're just trying to deal with um uh the shift to the new contract and see what the state can come up with in the next couple of years. That, that's what I would answer.
Thank you. Um and then my, my other question is, is this budget sufficient to meet the program objectives and goals for the next fiscal year?
Yes, understanding that that the bulk pickup is an estimate.
Yes.
Councilor, do you have any?
So Brian or Mike, uh so it would not be prudent to revitalize our own town dump again for, so we can separate our.
Our town is capped. You know, we can, we can look at the cost of putting another transfer station in there. Uh but we don't have a dump anymore. It's, it's capped and done.
Yeah. It's uh, uh again, it's, it's a, it's a large investment. We're talking millions of dollars. The, the site that's there now isn't even large enough for it. We'd have to it would be a big capital investment if we wanted to do it. You know, um I don't know why they closed it forty years ago. I assume it was because they wanted us to save money. We'd also have to hire employees to staff it, but it would be a big capital and operating input to, to bring it back online.
Ask any other questions? You can move on from trash.
That's it. Now, uh Dr. Willet.
Thanks, Mike. Um so many of you have had a lot of experience with the budgets.
Doctor, doctor, I'm sorry. Could I ask you to come up just because it might be hard for the owl to pick you up from over there and we wanna make sure the public can hear what you have to say, Joe. Thank you very much.
So in the past, you know, there, we've provided different iterations of budget presentations and I can go into as much detail or as much as you want. Um if you have the basic flyover and then you'd see how many budgets you have. The board of ed budget this year, about ninety-five percent of the increase is made up of a series of um a series of factors that it really doesn't have that much control over. For instance, transportation costs and fuel, diesel costs, teacher contractual obligations, I had many contractual obligations, para educator contractual obligations, same with custodians, secretaries, nurses, um ICMA, which is retirement, uh funding changes, uh special education tuition, special education, transportation, professional services, maintenance, things like that. So all these kinds of factors made up about two point five million, about ninety-five percent of the increase. And so it's, it's been, it's difficult to, to, to work through that and try not to have any other kind of impact. The board of ed budget also included reductions in force of about five positions, the M L A teacher, social studies teacher, science teacher, physical education teacher. And um uh we didn't carry a teacher over on grant and let that position go and just for educator. It also included all curriculum liaisons, grade leaders and team leader stipends um as well as a number of other reductions. So uh there was a, a lot of effort in the board's part to try to find a budget that it'll be a difficult budget year, had as little negative impact as possible. Although, you know, there's, there are some reductions here. It's far better than it could be otherwise. Um we worked closely with the town and are grateful for the town manager's budget um that has taken into account some of the things that the board has asked for, including um debt, that most um usage lines be brought into, initial into debt service, but uh brought off the board's budget. We're very grateful for that because if you think about it and look at the budget increases over the last few years, um that figure constitutes between one point one and one point four of the budget. So um those increases over the last eleven years, if you subtract a percent from that or one point four percent from that, that's essentially that figure. So um so that's the basic flyover. I don't know which more detail you want me to go into. I can go to the other aspects of this form.
I, I know we've, uh a lot of us have attended board of ed meetings, uh watched them, and then we had the joint meeting most recently. Um perhaps we just like to ask questions at this point? Is there, do we wanna see more information from Dr. Willet or can we ask specific questions?
Questions.
All right. Do you have a question?
Uh I do.
Sure, go ahead. You can start us.
Um I lost the page, but um oh, we took the, took the slide down.
Slide one.
Uh there was one, there was board of ed slide in the packet.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. Towards the edge.
Yeah.
Um Lisa, could you put that back up for us? Which, which one did you want?
The board of ed.
The last two pages before I jumped into buildings.
Sure. It gets, uh, page thirty-one, slide thirty-one.
Yeah.
Oh, wait a second.
Uh hold on. First the presentation. That's the keyboard that you can, there we go. Whoop, there is one.
No. No, you, you want that one? You want the one at the end?
Yeah, slide thirty-one.
Oh, it's not slide thirty.
To work before it, I think.
There you go. Trying to get the uh hold on a minute. There you go. Thank you.
Okay, so um as you've talked about, um this current proposal removes the um utilities, ESCO payment, puts it on the town side. Um I just kinda wanna make sure I understood the numbers right here. So on this slide, it says it's six hundred forty-nine thousand. Um then on the expenditure summary side, um says six seventy-six.
Four.
Yeah. Um is there anything else going up or is that all?
No, uh what that includes, the whole six seventy-six or whatever that number is, uh um is the town share because the, the board paid ninety-six percent of that debt or ESCO payment and the town paid four percent. So both came out and went into the debt fund.
So it's no, but no like actual cost increase on either side. It's?
No, it's just a reclassification of an expense. It was pulled out of the board budget, it was pulled out of the town operating budget and it moved it into the debt budget. So it made it look like the debt budget went up substantially, but we reduced the other budgets where it had previously been budgeted. So it's just moving it from one account to another, basically.
Okay.
It's not increasing those budgets and then adding more debt. It's reducing those budgets.
Yeah, it's like you said, it's, it's neutral. But on the other hand, it's, it's neutral because certain of those are utility problems. We have to pay. Okay. Um that's all for now.
Sure. Any other board of ed related questions?
Just a, just a question to clarify. The reason we're moving it is because board of ed, excuse me, board of ed shouldn't be carrying debt. That's correct.
By state statute, the board of education, unless they're like a regional school district or something to that effect, should not be paying a debt payment. However, the way this was originally designed was not really a debt payment. It, we were supposed to be budgeting for savings resulting from that project that would pay off the cost of that equipment. It's a long story.
Right.
But um over the years, it's just created challenges in perception, uh perception, you know, that they're paying a debt payment where the agreement originally when the project was approved by the board of education and the town council was that they would, we would get all this new equipment and we're gonna save a certain amount of money each year. That certain amount of money with average increases in your budget based on those savings would pay off that equipment. So yes, it's a debt payment, but not ever classified to be thought of as a debt payment.
I know we talked about this at a different meeting, but that didn't quite work out as planned.
Right.
Um which is where we're at today and why we're moving this over because we're not in that situation where the board of ed would normally not, would normally carry debt, correct?
Right, they would normally not carry debt. Uh again, um after the entire project was done, it came out to be about maybe not providing up to twenty-five thousand in savings a year. We s- we created a settlement with the company, the ESCO company, Honeywell. Um to account for that, otherwise it would have just cost us more money to try to get money back every year. We've ended up costing more than twenty-five thousand dollars for the estimated loss in, in savings that we weren't seeing. So um another thing that we did was we refinanced the lease. It's not, it's not a bond. It's a lease payment. Have a very good interest rate that you'd never be able to refinance. Plus, there's a penalty that if we even tried to refinance it, it would call, it would not be beneficial to do that. But it stabilized the amount because the way the original plan was, was that those savings had to have like a two and a half percent increase each year in the budget for those estimated savings to pay off the previous lease agreement. And by now, they would have been up over a million dollars a year. When we refinanced the lease agreement, we locked it in for the rest of the, the term at six hundred seventy-six thousand. And it will not increase every year and it saved us a couple million dollars by doing that. So even though we weren't getting the savings by refinancing it and restructuring it, we were still able to save a few mil, a couple million dollars by doing that.
I think I'm all set with that. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for the, so councilor, go ahead.
Um so Dr. Will, last time we spoke, I was mentioning to you that with the long-term planning that you have to have, keep in mind, uh you know, outliers or projected changes. So as we've drilled down and narrowed our scope here, have those changed in your mind or is this still a, a beneficial uh five-year plan in your, in your eyes or not?
Yeah, the uh, the five-year figures that I have given to Senator Carr uh represent what, if we were able to get, if we provide less stability uh for us and the town. So that is something that we can actualize. Um it will, and, and the fact that um with the town manager's uh courage, you know, leadership, this transition of the use of the town. I think that would provide a massive amount of stability for the district and we'd have a big five-year stretch where we could make a uh, a five-year plan that we can count on there being a certain level of resources to execute.
And going forward, do you think there's anything that schools can implement to save money? Uh like on utilities, maybe?
Well, I think uh there are always things uh that we've been, always things that we're looking at to save money. Peter Staba, who's a facilities director, has done a masterful job in every area that we could possibly do it, putting in in LED lighting and um, you know, making sure that we pay very close attention to uh how we, how we keep using C in the school system. So writing grants every opportunity we can. Um we, we have many partnerships with the town that you're aware of. We've spoken of them before, so I had long to list them off uh in all the meetings. Uh but everywhere we can possibly find efficiencies, we do. Um and we've even done that with programs, you know, where we can um if we can, uh in a budget situation, if we end up losing a program, we do find, try to find surrogates. Uh we have done a lot of cost avoidance work. Our lead program, massive cost avoidance for the town and the district. Uh Town Transition Academy also has significant cost avoidance for the town and the district. Um and we continue to look for uh programs and opportunities to do that where we can provide excellent educational services to children um for lower than what it would be to outplace any consultant jobs. So we're constantly looking for ways to keep kids in the district, get kids in town, give them the best education, give them community with each other while avoiding the cost of outplacements that would be very damaging to us.
Okay. And going forward, kind of following and, and having flow with the wave here and what proposed budget will pass, is there a way? a way to bring back, uh, programs that have been like, popular ones like rope? Or the once those are lost, those are?
Well, I've always tried to use an example, um, skills for adolescents, you know, that disappeared in much to much agreement. Um, there was a teacher that taught this, they taught these seniorship skills for adolescents in one area. Um, and there was a para, there was a teacher that used to teach real, but then a para when he couldn't do it from the teacher. Um, and so we'll try to do things, uh, for instance, I taught a skills for adolescent, two, four skills for adolescent sections myself. Um, in order to get to the position where I could provide it, you know, get a grant, you got a hundred thousand dollar grant and you ran it through that grant for a couple of years. We're coming up to the edge of, um, that that time span, and so we're trying to figure out how we can continue skills for adolescents, but it went away years ago. I taught it, we got a grant, taught it to the grant for a while, and now we're looking for how to keep it alive. Um, so we're always looking for ways to sustain things, even if we've lost the program. Um, but sometimes, you know, sometimes we can, sometimes we can't.
Councilor Murray.
Uh, I just had a follow-up question, Dr. Will, on UCIP. Um, so I understand from a historical perspective, um, Lisa's explanation is sort of how we ended up where we are, but I just wanted to clarify that, so this hasn't resulted in any savings for the board, right? In fact, this has been out of your operating expenses, you've been paying about six hundred fifty thousand dollars a year, or is this correct?
Yes, um, yes, it's part of the energy money we transfer over every year. So if we could make it less by that amount, that means our budgets can be lower by that amount. So it has a mutual benefit. Um, you know, that we, the rabbit hole can get, can go very deep on these. I think the intention of people way back when, um, this was reviewed, I think there were good intentions, but I think that, um, these kinds of things are a little tiny bit of a snake oil arrangement in that, um, if you look at how school districts manage leases and keep going with the lease, we can lease computers, and if you fail to pay the lease, they can come back and take the computers. Nobody's taking massively heavy, usually installed geothermal systems out of schools. You know, that's not how that works.
Right.
This whole concept is a little, you know, my kids would call it the sketch or whatever.
Right.
Um, so, I mean, it's not that, I think intention at the time was very good. Um, but what it for all intents and purposes is broken down to is that there's this chunk now that, you know, that, um, you know, is a capital expense or big geothermal systems, just like roofs, just like turf fields, they're capital expenses. And we're just, we're just putting it right.
Right, so that was, I think, my question was that, um, again, not because of bad intentions, but the position that the board ended up in, you were paying approximately seven, six hundred fifty thousand a year, uh, out of your operating, uh, budget for what would typically come out of, be planned in a capital budget, correct?
Typically be part of that.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Dr. Will? Sure, ask the finance one. Sure, so you're checking. I was on Board of Ed and on the finance facility, we talked about it. I know this has always been a thing in the budget that's been a P, but why hasn't it ever been asked before? Or maybe it has and I just don't remember. Has it really been moved out of the budget?
Well, you know, there's, it's had a long history. Um, and again, I think it's full of good intentions and the the staff of the town and board are really trying to figure out how to navigate the waters of this.
Yeah.
Um. The Honeywell situation ended fairly unfavorably in that it did not live up to our expectations. And as you know, there's a two hundred thousand dollar settlement the town received, um, after that, uh, for that reason. And and measurement verification never really worked out. So, you know, I think there was high hopes for this thing when it started and everybody was trying to make, you know, trying to figure out how to make it work. But now that there is no more Honeywell agreement, and for all intents and purposes, none of its original leases exist, um, this, this wouldn't be a logical time for there to be a transition of this back to what might have been its natural place had this never been executed or never been pursued. And had this never been executed and never been pursued, then like any other major million-dollar project, it would have been capital. It would have come to for a capital upgrade on the systems and the town would have built it into its capital budget. And so this is really just a moment in time where we can correct this. Um, and when I use the word correct, I don't mean that someone did anything wrong. I just mean, if you really look at this carefully, it naturally belongs in capital. And it was an experiment, but that experiment, for all intents and purposes, failed. And I think if that presented itself again, I don't see any of us ever saying, let's go ahead and do that one again, because it would be very unfavorable. And again, if you look at the budgets. It's, it's going to make it so that the board's not asking, you know, there's going to be a lower opportunity. Well, you can ask the lower numbers if you're not embedding, we're not embedding you, but it it's not embedding six hundred fifty thousand in, then next year, that's not, that's not going to be part of the budget request. Because right now it is.
Okay. And then I've gone to this pretty times, I made this question for Lisa. So if it's transferred over to the town side and the debt side, does it cost any more than the six fifty or is there additional interest or anything like that?
No, it's just taking it out of one budget and putting it in another. It's already existing in the Board of Ed budget, it's already existing in the town budget. We reduced those budgets and moved it into, um, the debt.
Okay, I was just getting a little confused on whatever age I mentioned.
So it's not impacting the no rate except for, you know, what your current increases are. Because it's moving from one to another, sliding it over.
Okay, thank you. Good, Dan, thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Will?
Yeah, of course. Um, so, um, a couple things, can, can I get, um, can I get year-to-date actuals on the, all the object numbers associated with the Board of Ed instead of budget numbers?
Every month we publish year-to-date actuals. It's our monthly budget report at the beginning of the month.
That's, that's out of the website?
Yeah.
Is it by?
Every first meeting we do year-to-date actuals.
Is it by object number? Is it by object number?
It's by, i- it's a one-page or so, it's rollups, but the FFC does one that's seven, seven pages that is mostly, you know, all the objects.
Yeah, so how do I get the object number one year-to-date?
Just any FFC meeting, if you just, you can get it from.
To the minutes?
Yeah, we can, uh, we can give you the last one from the last FFC meeting. It's done with FFC monthly as well.
Okay, so. How do I get that? I just go to the FFC.
Send you the last one, we just did one week today.
Okay. And then, um, we talked last time about the the CD, this insurance reserve CD that is out there. Can I get the balance of that CD over the last five years? And then how long that CD is typically?
Yeah, you can ask the town to offer that.
So we're going to get, uh, insurance, an insurance briefing, uh, I think to- tomorrow night? The insurance tomorrow or is it Monday?
Right, I'm guessing, I don't know.
Okay, it's coming, uh, and as I said in the last council meeting, uh, the, uh, Mr. Wilkinson is going to prepare a memo that talks about all the different, uh, elements of that, so I think those follow-up questions can come in that meeting when we talk about insurance.
Can wait for that meeting?
Yes, thank you.
Is that what we got yesterday, though? Was that something from yesterday?
Yeah. But it's going, there, there will be a public meet, it will be discussed in a public meeting, um, with all of us. The insurance gets its own section.
Okay. Um, just a point of clarification on, on this UCIP, but unlike any other capital lease that we have, the whole intent of this back, ten, eleven years ago when I was involved in this was that the school was receiving a tremendous benefit from getting its geothermal system. Unlike other capital expenditures, where there's not this payback, the geothermal system had a payback to it. Granted, it didn't work out, but, you know, everybody's pushing green energy and, you know, let's cut back on utility expenses, and this was a great idea. And actually, it actually still is a pretty decent idea. The town does, this, the school does get a benefit from this system. It's not like this was a huge mistake and we should go back to oil and, you know, let's redo all the equipment we just purchased, so. That's a big difference, that there's a benefit that the town got, and that's why the town and the Board of Ed agreed that, okay, the Board of Ed should keep this in their budget. This, this wasn't a debatable item back then. It, it seemed like it was very synergistic, everything worked out very well. Um, so I'd like to know what changed other than perception.
Well, I said, I think it did work. If you look at it, the M and B process was a disaster. They, they didn't live up to their end of the bargain. We had to go through tons of work every year to, to show them their mistakes. We ended up getting money back every year because they failed to live up to the energy standards.
Where'd the money go?
And, uh, the money went back to us and the town. I think it goes to the town. The two hundred thousand settlement agreement went to the town. It went to energy, any other energy went to UCIP. Um, the two hundred thousand went back to town. This was not a success.
Well, the board, the board benefited from the cell.
Well, the board benefits from any advance in technology. If we stop burning wood and start wearing oil, you pay more for wood than oil. I mean, you know, anytime you advance the system in any building, you're going to have hopefully a benefit because systems advance over the years and geothermal is an advanced system over like a oil system. But it, it's still a capital, it's still a capital expense, you know, and so that efficiency is passed on to the town because if you can, you know, if you can spend less on energy, you ask for lower budgets. We, you know, if you look at the eleven-year average, we could have subtracted a percent from even that if the board didn't have to include the six hundred fifty thousand in this budget. Of course, an installation of a more efficient system would mean that that means you spend less on it, you ask for less in your budgets. You pay less in your house for your energy when we get.
So would we be having this conversation if there was a savings higher than the actual spending a year? The board was making money?
Well, I, I don't think you're ever going to make money on energy or burning energy.
No, the savings, if there was net savings. Would we be having this conversation?
There's any kind of net savings we're doing, the board could ask for a lower budget than what it's asking for. Well, it wouldn't have to ask for, you know, what it's spending if it's saving money on.
Yeah, just, I mean, this was an agreement, the board understood it, the board understood the risk associated with taking out this type of system, was all for it. And now what changed on the proceeding?
All due respect, Mr. Shea, I don't think that they did understand it. I think that after a span of time, people came to regret that this had been decided, you know, especially when we saw the M and B's fail and, and him with the two hundred dollar settlement, um, to the town. It's pretty, it became pretty obvious to the people that weren't involved that this was not something we thought it was. Having said that, I don't blame people at the time because, hey, listen, it was a, it was a, it was a way of proceeding that seemed, you know, like it had some benefits. I certainly think people had, again, the best of intentions, but I think there's ample evidence to show that it did not play out the way that, you know, the, the snake oil people had promised us it would play out. It ended up being quite different than that. And what end, at the end of the day, ended up happening is, you know, we had this six hundred fifty thousand dollar suspension on the board side that made the board budgets higher by six hundred and fifty thousand. And so when people complained about, you know, geez, these board budgets are high, they could have been one point four percent lower if that wasn't in there. And if that had been put in the capital spends, like every other capital expense, building a school, building a roof, building a, a field, putting in a more efficient system, you know, air, whatever, air conditioning, um, that would be capital, that wouldn't be embedded in the board budget. So it's just artificially increasing the board budgets, making it look bad, and, and it makes it harder for everybody.
On that argument, then, you're artificially decreasing the, uh, the amount that the Board of Ed is getting this year, right?
Not so.
You're balancing the prior year budget and pulling it out of the current.
Not so artificial because your typical process is capital. This would not be something the board would carry, the board would not be paying on debt. And the argument that it's a lease, it doesn't fit because every other lease that you talk about with respect to anything a school can get into, something like computers or a material item that can be taken, these can never be taken. So some good lawyers created a massively great non-appropriations clause, and it really says, we could stop paying this at any time. That's what it says. So what happens if we stop paying this at any time? They're going to come pull the systems out? They're not. It's, it's a false, it's really just a.
You want to take that chance?
What I'm saying is the whole thing.
Do you want to take that chance?
Well, point one, are you getting argumentative? Yeah. Please let him finish what he's saying.
What I'm saying is it makes no sense. It's a capital project, they, this is a system, it's not a computer. It's not truly the way at least would typically be looked at in a school. So the point is, it was set up, you know, in a way that looked like it was fantastic, but I think there's ample evidence that it was not. And that, you know, that most things like this, almost every other example you can think of, are in your capital process, which is the natural process that you've been following for years for expenditures of this kind or installations of systems. This is sketchy, and it didn't, it needed to end, and you got a two hundred thousand dollar settlement for it to end. So it's clear, almost everything that we can see today, that this was not what we thought it was.
My last question, what benefit did the town get by moving over to the town by?
Well, I mean, the town puts capital back where capital would have been, and the benefit they get is that the board budget will, you know, probably be less than it would have been otherwise if that six fifty was in it. They won't be asking for as much because it was sent in there over time.
It really, it's a one-shot benefit to the Board of Ed because it makes your, makes your rate increase look better than really, your rate increase look lower than.
Every year here to four, we don't have to include six hundred and fifty thousand dollars more in the budget, so it has an extended positive impact.
It's the Board of Ed, but not the town?
No, it, it's just that if you're going to say that that's going to be in there, it's going to keep making the board's budget look higher. People will complain about how high the board budget is, it could be less without that. But every year, it's not. If you look at the statistic data that we presented on other surrounding towns, you look at our average increases over eleven years, it's one point seven one. And compared to some of the towns that are comparable to us, it's lower than they are. I mean, you're not getting fleeced here. Your, your budgets for your education system are not high, and if you actually consider that UCIP's been in there all those years, that makes it even more interesting when you look at that over a long span of time. So I think, to go back to the question, um, Mr. Moonan asked, I think it's because the board has done such a great job of cost avoidance measures over the last few years, and because we have such wonderful employees like the Facilities Director, who's worked to get grants and do, you know, create a lot of efficiencies, we've offset a lot of the impacts that would have been even far more negative. I think it's run very efficiently. I also think that refinancing, like, uh, Sandcock did, she did a masterful job of helping balance it out. On the town side, your town employees and your school employees made something that was really a lemon into the best thing we could with what we were given. And not, it was systems or lemon, but the agreement was not fantastic.
What's the current rate, I mean?
Two point one two percent.
How does that compare to like the other bonds that we?
Four and a half percent.
The other bond is four and a half percent?
Summer five, it, it, it all depends on when we issued them, and the rates are, have gone up over the past three years. And if we were to even try to refinance this, there's a two percent penalty as well, so it would not be feasible.
So it's more beneficial to pay off the bond, the other bonds that we have as opposed to trying to pay off this?
Yeah, we really can't, you know, there's, there's all kinds of laws around repaying any sort of municipal debt.
Um, what about the buyout, what's the buyer that the M and W's of this, with a zero, zero buyout?
Yeah, I mean, you pretty much own it, yeah.
Uh, is there a penalty for any kind of early payoff?
Yes.
That's the?
Two, two percent.
That's the two percent, well, that's, that's if you, you finance it, right? But can you just?
No, if you pay it off also, so two percent.
So there's no benefit to that.
Yeah.
We haven't gone around one time yet, so. You asked a question.
I did.
Yeah, okay. Is there, is there anyone else who isn't gone and wants to ask a question?
Thank you, Ellen.
Okay, then I have some questions. Dr. Will, how does an increase in class size impact our students?
Uh, well, you know, any, anyone who has taught knows that, you know, teaching a class of twenty-one, twenty-two is many, is much different than teaching a class of twenty-six or twenty-seven.
I haven't taught, so if you could look at me, I'd appreciate it.
Just, well, what happened again?
No, it's okay.
It's, um, you can't get as far into the curriculum, into the, you know, into the unit as you need to, uh, your pacing, you know, pacing guide, um, that you're supposed to follow, curriculum, the state, you may not make it all the way through the year, all the way through the content, you may not be able to. You may not be able to provide a step instruction in the content. Um, and then ultimately that means that the kids' experience and learnings is going to be less if you have class sizes that make it too large, uh, to follow the reasonable pacing guide to get through the content in a year and to be able to give the kids the instructions needed.
Thank you. What has the board event done to address the, the headline news that we've been seeing lately about disconnect? And our youth being disconnected?
Well, you know, we, um, I think that there were some significant challenges for our culture going in and out of COVID um, that, that really affected how young people are able to regulate their emotions, you know? Faced with a lot of fear, a lot of anxiety, a lot of pain, and a lot of suffering, people lost people. For a couple of years, I think, uh, and yeah, because there was a lack of socialization over a span of time, uh, I think young adults and kids and even adults, uh, didn't relate to each other as well. And so in that way, we're disconnected with each other. That, it actually amplified some trends that were already happening. You know, the movie The Social Dilemma is a really good one for looking at the impact of um that disconnect on kids and how social media and phones was driving that. And uh, the um, the, I just read, what is it, the technology group? There's a group, let's see if I can remember the name basically, that talks about um, the race to the bottom of the brainstem with respect to how technology has been utilized. So the apps, people think you don't pay for them, but you pay for them in your attention, and they constantly grab the kid's attention, and they take that attention away from each other. So the school district invests in, uh, and has put a lot of energy into social emotional learning. Yale's program called Ruler, it is helping kids learn to emotionally regulate better. Um, and there's many facets to it, we're seeing great results from that, starting to pull kids back out of these shells that they've been in. Um, the, uh, it's called the Center for Human Technology, I'm sorry if you wanna look it up, um, that also talks about those very negative impacts on kids and social media, phones and all that, and COVID. So social emotional learning programs from Ruler and Yale, um, has been extremely helpful with that. Uh, we also are looking at new ways to limit the use of the electronics in their classrooms, uh, because that, that is continually taking away from their ability to focus on each other and their own well-being. Um, and so these are some of the most overt things we're doing. We also have a number of programs, advisories, what we call connect blocks, where we're working with children to, um, you know, to, to make sure that, you know, that they are focusing on their mental health needs. Uh, we have, um, you know, substance abuse and avoidance programs that we, uh, continue to try to provide. One of those was skills for adolescents, another was in leadership. So we wanna keep some of that, to keep continuing to have them talking about things and recognizing what are bad, you know, what are good risks you can take in life that enhance your life, and what are bad risks in life? Um, a bad risk might be using marijuana or eating a wonder bar that has, uh, you know, TUC in it. A good risk might be, um, learning a new skill, skydiving, something that enhances your life. So we're trying to do a lot of that teaching through, um, especially if you're a parent. You know, we're, we're trying to teach those kinds of things because that, that also helps affect the quality of kids' life and their success. Um, providing programs that appeal to the vast variety of children that, um, you know, children's needs. For instance, making sure we have sufficient programming in music, um, and the arts. You know, not every child can be a football player but wants to be. Um, they wanna play the sax, we wanna have a place for them and an affinity group for them. So it's really important in the schools that we have many clubs and opportunities and activities so that kids can find home in an affinity group, you know, uh, with their years and that they don't feel isolated and alone. You know, and, and again, with our efforts to make sure that we're being fair and, you know, and doing the right work, well, PTQIA plus populations, hopefully diverse populations, um, making sure everybody feels safe and at home.
Are we doing enough?
Um, I don't feel like anyone in public service could ever say there's any luck, because that's why we're here. Um, but, you know, um, we ran programs this year, for instance, for PTQIA. I feel like we could do more if we had more resources. Um, we're gonna start, regain and continue some programs, um, you know, uh, for marginalized populations. Uh, we're gonna continue to expand our open choice programming. And I think those are things that provide a lot of great things for our, for children in our state and in town. But that, you know, the more resources you have, the more you can do.
And I know that the, uh, fourth, fifth, eighth, I'm sorry, I don't remember the number off the top of my head. The budget that's in the town manager's proposed budget includes some reduction in programs at the board event side. Are there any, uh, social emotional health programs that are being reduced in that?
No, what, what, why in this town you have amazing people working for you? And so what we've done is, we're not hitting the social emotional learning program, we're just gonna make everyone's job more difficult so that we can keep the kids' social emotional health. For instance, not having team leaders, great leaders, um, liaisons, that means the administrators have to take on even more weight of those jobs. Then, you know, because we know how important social emotional learning is to children, we're gonna sacrifice some things of, you know, our own sanity and our own jobs to make sure that we're not sacrificing kids' social emotional health along the way. Um, teachers are sacrificing having the ability to have those stipends, which, you know, again, and that the thought there is feed everybody on the boat a little bit less rather than throw seven more people off the boat. Um, there's a massive amount of sacrifice that happens every year. And there's also sacrifice across the town, of course, budgets, you know, probably sacrifice for everyone. But the thing to know is that in the school system, we're constantly trying to find ways so that we're not adding extra burden to the town. And I've said these things before, but a district of our size would have a curriculum director, and if those not, or would have a super, and it does not. Um, and, you know, would have other positions that it does not. Um, we're not, we're not asking for things like that because we know that would be a burden. But at the same time, it, it's, you know, a symbol of the work that people are willing to do here to avoid losing things like S E L.
Are you having a hard time recruiting staff with that kind of, uh, request of them?
It can, it can be, uh, I have people that I've written letters of recommendation for because they, you know, feel like at this point, um, you know, they, they can make more somewhere else. But these are the decisions, you know, there are no easy decisions when it comes to stuff like this. There is a sacrifice somewhere no matter what you do. Yes, it does create some issues there.
So for the, um, the first time, I'm, I feel like I'm rounding out the school system as my oldest child is in high school this year. And, um, we went through the process of looking at electives for next, next year and, um, there was some disappointment at my house. Um, is there a reduction in electives at the high school for next year?
I would say due to an increase in required courses and a decrease in the number of people we have, it will affect the electives.
What about extracurriculars? How are, are we seeing a reduction in extracurriculars with this proposed budget?
Right now, it's hard to say. I don't think we'll actually have too many reductions in extracurriculars as a result of this budget because of the way that we fund them. Extracurriculars are one of those things that parents partially pay for. So that's, that's why something like this is not affected the old, you know, the old. It has an effect, but it's not gonna be as profound as if there weren't some money coming in from parents for extracurriculars.
Ben, I went as well. Uh, Dr. Willett, all right. I hope this isn't presumptuous, but, um, your PhD is in educational policy, what, what's your PhD?
Administration.
Administration. And, um, you've been in schools for a number of years presumably, experiencing the impact schools have on a community? What, what is the impact that schools have in a community?
Well, you know, I think there are many, many things that bring people to a community, um, leadership of people, elected officials like yourselves that are willing to give time and practice, beacons for hope for people. Um, you know, a school system is an industry in the town. It's like having Pratt and Whitney on a smaller level. Because you employ, there are, last time I checked, there's a hundred and sixty-two people that, um, that's just a number from a while back, probably a little different now, but it's around the same. Those individuals live here and work here, and the income you're giving them, they're reinvesting in your town. You know, uh, the, the school system purchases from a lot of your local businesses. Um, the school system supports a lot of the local, um, businesses and things around by the amount of money that is transferred from, you know, the taxes that are spent there through the school system back into the community. So it's actually one of your industries, and this town is probably one of your bigger industries. Um, so funds get passed into it and back into the town in a number of ways. Um, also, if you have a school system like you do, which I think you've got some really hardworking people and you've got some really great supportive elected officials, where your, um, you know, your top five in your DIRG, um, top three for SAT scores. You know, in the DIRG, and, you know, that, that means that if I were considering a place to move, um, to bring my tax dollars and my family, it would, it would be here. This would be one of the places that would be considered. Doesn't hurt that you're so close to the highway too, you know, a lot of benefits. But having a school system like this means you're gonna have people drawn to the town that would also bring, um, you know, bring their income, bring their taxes. Um, it does have, uh, you know, have a burden on some with the tax situation, and that's always something that in Connecticut with a hundred and sixty-nine pounds and all that, the state needs to look at that more to help people so it's not pitting people against each other. But, you know, I would suggest that your school system is an industry here. It employs a very large number of people. Money does go back into the community in a number of ways and, um, supports local businesses and, um, draws people in, um, to your taxpayers.
And does this proposed budget allow our school system to stay competitive?
I, I would say that the budget that, um, you know, the town manager had the courage to put forward, uh, will do a good job of keeping things competitive. You know, there are some adjustments that are being made and have been made, uh, for a moment, things like that. You know, uh, we, we are taking on the weight of things that, um, the staff will have to pick up some things that they didn't have to do before, but, uh, that it will keep your school system competitive, it is past deadline. There's always going to be some things that we've lost here. Um, you know, I do think that there is an erosion over the years, so, you know, it is important to keep in mind that, you know, we wanna keep building it and not creating situations that will make it difficult for it to achieve the third highest in SATs and the fifth highest in the DIRG.
And my last question, is this budget a good first step to start this five-year plan uh, for Board of Ed?
It is, it is a good step, yes. And the, the piece about it is the fluctuations are the kill. If you look back over that budget and you see, you know, if we can have stability over a span of five years and not the point, you know, eight fours and the zeros and, you know, and that type of thing, um, it's those years that destroy it. Because those are the years you, you, you get massive chunks of your system taken out. Um, that's where the biggest changes have happened and the biggest negative changes have happened. So if you can avoid those massive fluctuations, you know, go a long way, and it'll allow us to do strategic planning that I think in five years from now will put this district even farther than it is. But if it fluctuates like the budgets we've had, you know, going up and down, up in the past, down to some of those real low points, that's when, um, we can't keep staffs. They, they're afraid of losing their jobs, the, you cut massive chunks of the programs. Um, that's when the most damage is done. So that five-year plan, we, you know, can find a way to commit to that. And there are some really good mechanisms for getting there now. You know, USIP and some other things the school's pursuing, from cooperative relationships, I think, uh, we'll go a very, very long way in the next five years.
Thank you. For the second time, does anyone have any other questions for Dr. Willett? So you're.
Actually, my dear mom, if you, Lisa, um, if you move in the USIP, then why would you choose uh, debt over the capital? Because I know Dr. Willett keeps saying capital, the use of funds.
I'm just saying, if you had a time machine, uh, an expense that big, of a system that big or a thing that big would typically be a capitalist.
Right, that's why I'm just asking on the town side, like, why do you choose put it in the debt part versus the capital part?
Because we're no longer building, we're putting equipment in installed, we're paying off a payment.
Okay.
So it was probably more appropriate to put it under the debt budget than under capital. Just like, uh, we have some other stuff under capital once it stabilizes for the burning sewer upgrade. That would be something I'd recommend in the future to be moved over to the debt and not of the capital fund. But that's another conversation for another day.
So what was the total balance on the, the USIP, the total, the well balance?
Oh, what's left? We have a room of debts, actually. Sorry.
Recording in progress.
Uh, it doesn't have grand total. But if you look at page forty-three in your budget book, you can add up the, uh, the ESCO on both, there's two columns for the principal and interest.
Okay.
You can add those two columns up, there's no grand total, it just shows by year how much we'd be paying, just, yeah, each year, there's, it's the six seventy-six going out for one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten more years.
But it goes down each year?
Yeah, yeah. Well, no, the, the six seventy-six stays the same each year. It just, the principal goes down and the interest goes up, or the interest goes down, principal, whatever.
Which, which column do you want to add, Lisa?
Page forty-three, if you look over to the left, you'll see the fiscal year, bonds, principal side. See the word ESCO?
Yeah.
All right, that's the principal portion of the, the lease payment.
Okay.
Then if you go to the right, you'll see
ESCO interest.
The interest portion.
They're asking if there's people on the waiting.
Somebody popped up.
And if we move over this or somewhere, or whatever, how does it affect the town side? I guess this is a question for the town manager. Does it affect the town side going forward since we'll be looking at studies for the fire department that they ask, or say they need staff in there because we're sure, um, have you thought about that, what it would look like? Like they have a plan going forward, um, what's that plan like for us?
So we, 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 we have a five-year plan in each budget.
But it might be changing because.
Because of the debt payment?
Or this, if we do this study, uh, firehouse study, and it says we might need staff or whatever. Or if we do this study, firehouse study, and it says we might need staff, or whatever it is, how does that incorporate, like, change anything?
Well, any study, a five-year plan is, is an estimate, basically, or a prediction, and anything could alter that. I don't, I don't, I don't want to say I don't see anything major, but, you know, who knows what could happen. We're prepared to handle it, understanding that our five-year plan is just, it's a plan, but things change.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're doing all these studies and I don't want to be wasting people's money if we're not actually gonna do what those say. So I'm just wondering if we have a plan for our future, and it's not gonna affect the staff by moving some of, all the money out of the part of the money. If that makes sense. Or even the state troopers or something.
We have a plan, but we live year to year based on the budget.
Okay. So we kind of?
We have a five-year plan, we do. But again, we don't, you know, we have a consultant, we have a DPW consultant report that we're already diverted from. That we just got, you know, this year, so. I don't, we don't have, we don't have the money to add the staff.
Yeah.
From DPW. Now, you know, they want, they want some group of admin to record everything in regards to equipment and repairs and parts, and we don't have that. You know, we, we, we took a DPW staff away that council back then had said they were gonna replace, and I, I didn't even want to put it in the budget this year. None of that, I wouldn't put any of it in the budget, you know? A consultant or someone to help us with the strategic plan, like, we're gonna put that in the budget. It's already at five, I can't put any of that in there. I, I cut everything out.
Yeah, I know. And I, I do want to point out something. I noticed in the beginning that in the Board of Ed budget, but it also said comes the Murray, Chairman Murray asked for the increase here too, and that's not part of process. I just wanted to point it out, that scope kept on the board, but to include the chair. That's something we've never done.
I'm not looking at you.
It wasn't direct order, and it did end up in the book. That probably never should have happened.
Are there any other questions for Dr. Will?
Go ahead, Alex.
Go ahead.
So just layman's terms for me, and for others that speak in layman's terms. The lease, who was, for these utilities, who was paying this lease before?
The town and the board.
The town.
Theoretically, unrest of paying the lease.
So it was symbiotic, in a way?
Yeah, I mean, it, it was set up using the term lease.
Who was paying for it now?
Under the current arrangement, we are both still doing the same thing. It's just that there is no more honeywell agreements to which we are applying.
So it's still symbiotic and still be being paid by call?
Yeah, I mean, it's, again, you know, going back to the history of it, it's a mechanism for funding that turned out to be unfavorable for the board, but it still continues.
So if it's symbiotic or both after the change, why? Me trying to understand it, layman's terms, just why move it?
Because the board's budget, the worst way I can articulate or show this is, if you look at the budget over eleven years, it's got an average of one point seven more, right? And if you subtract that there's six hundred and fifty thousand embedded in this, then that budget's even lower. It's not being used under ten, two, twenty-two for books or programs like the skill strat lessons that we're talking about, possibly not having anymore and things like that. So it just pops that up higher. It's a, it's a, it is a sketchy way, not, not at the time, at the time I understand. It's, we didn't know what we know now, but I don't think anyone now would do the same thing over again if that choice was presented to us, for the reasons that have transpired over the last decade of experience. So it's a mechanism for funding that for all intents and purposes has hurt the board, and makes the board's budgets that they're requesting higher, when they could be lower than they ought to be.
Okay, so the board's budget will be up here and be lower?
Because that's not in there, you can ask for less by that amount.
But it will still be paid by taxpayers?
No matter what you do, any investment you make in a, in a system, whether it's a football field, a roof, or a, a heating system, it's gonna be paid for by taxpayers, yeah.
Thank you. Councilor Ryan?
I don't like conceptualizing this as like, sort of like the Board of Ed is the enemy of the town, but Dr. Will, so how much under the current arrangement is the Board of Ed paying for the, this use of?
It's six hundred and forty-nine thousand.
Okay, and how much is the town paying, do you know, or Dr. Brian, do you know?
Twenty-six thousand.
Okay. Okay, so, sorry, a different question. I think we're up for some sort of accreditation this year, or soon, in ESAC or something like that. Would further cuts to the Board of Education funding be detrimental to that process?
Let me ask, it looks at what the school system can provide, and we did go through our first kind of flyover. They come back in two years, and they're gonna make recommendations. My guess is they're gonna make recommendations about, you know, intervention, having enough curriculum. And so, yeah, you know, any, any adverse budget situations could impact how they evaluate this, this school system and the town will go on.
Last question I have is, how intervention rates increased in recent years, or like, the trend, like, are they increasing? Is that, is there any impact of that as far as budget constraints or staff constraints?
Yeah, well, they're definitely increasing. I mean, coming out of the COVID and all that, especially in youngest grades, we are gonna have to make serious changes in operations to take this burst of people, young, young children coming in that have, that have significant needs. From the point of view of intervention, special education, it is, it's happening nationwide, and so it's happening here, and we're working our best to, to adjust to it, but you know, we have high numbers, and I think I've, I've ever seen in my career with respect to the percent being designated as needing intervention or even special education.
So do we have the resources to meet that?
It's challenging, the system. And the teachers are, are angels in that, and there's so many, I mean, across the whole community, there are amazing people, heroics going on everywhere. The teachers are also doing that, paras, the, you know, the staff working, DCBAs, as we know them, and all the staff. I hate to do this, like, Academy Awards, I don't want to name all the names here, but but they are overwhelmed, and they're doing their best to serve the children with these, you know, needs they're coming in, but they are definitely overwhelmed. And teachers are feeling it, and all staff are feeling it. And they're expressing it, and we are losing, you know, people because of that. Very good people.
Thank you, and definitely, obviously, thanks to the teachers for all that they do.
Just going on, on Alex's point, and again, I've made it a few times, but I kind of get where he's coming from. At the end of the day, it is the same dollar amount that has to pass referendum. It's not a savings, and I want to make that very clear. It's the same dollar amount. It will increase our debt by a certain amount, even if it lowers the board's side, and then that would be higher historically. So from that standpoint, I, I need to say it, Dr. Will, with all due respect, I don't think it really matters from a financial perspective. I'm happy to look at it, but as long as it is the same number that has to pass referendum, like, that's, that's kind of the question when it comes to funding of the town and the Board of Ed. So that's just kind of how I feel about it. I'm on the fence about moving it, but I just need to say that. That's all.
Thank you. Any other questions?
We do have someone in the waiting.
There's mine. Thank you.
So my question is, how are unfunded mandates negatively affecting the budget?
Massively affecting the budget. I, I think this question's been asked many times, and I know the, the leadership of the chair and others will be talking about it in our communications and our FFC committees, but I know it's come up, so I'll just briefly address it. Questions have been asked and answered in that, and for instance, someone might ask, give us your top ten. The problem is that it's like saying you have a tire factory supplying tires for a semi, and you say, give us ten new tires. You know, how, which ten tires do you need replaced? When it's the production in the tire factory that's the problem. The tire's being produced from the factory, it's a bad process. So no matter how, which ten you replace on the truck, the core problem is the process. And right now, the process needs to be evaluated, because they, there, for whatever ten we pick this year, twenty will come next year, and until the process is fixed. And that's the answer. That's why there is no ten. You could pick any ten, they'll be replaced by thirty more. And we communicated in the past, I think at one point, to a variety of people, I communicated something like three hundred and eighty-three. And so I could list, and, and actually, if I'm not alone, a cost, the organization your town belongs to, CCM, they have published lists of hundreds. So this isn't a pick-ten thing. This is a fix-the-process thing. And so that's gonna require a lot of energy from a lot of people like us, saying, your process is the problem. You know, and if you have implementer bills, for instance, where there's been backroom deals by the heads of both parties, and you get a thousand-page document, there's no chance in heck that you could read, or any legislator could read, that's embedded a whole bunch of things that didn't have public hearings in there, but that cost the district and the town all kinds of money through all kinds of requirements. That's the problem. It's a process problem. So rather than being patronized, you know, we need to be able to say, you know, we can't pick the ten, because there'll be ten more, and twenty more, and thirty more after that. We're requesting that there be a change in the way it's done. So I can give you examples of things, but, you know, they would all be things that cost us time and money, and there are many on the town side. CCM has published them. CAPS, the superintendent's organization publishes them, K publishes them. You have many resources to look at for the new ones. But take a look over the past five or ten years, there are new ones every year. So we just have to get out of the rut of thinking that we can choose three to attack this year and focus our energy on the, the genesis of it, which is the process by which they come.
Thank you. I'm wondering, what is the recommended classroom size? Not what the state cap is, but what is actually recommended?
Well, you know, that, that's a great question and a tough one to answer. The, in the, on the budget side for the board, under the budget link, there is an enrollment report. And the first two pages of that are researched by APA and by Tennessee Authority and groups like that. I use the APA as an example. They say you have to have consistent class sizes for at least four years to have positive impact. So a child has to go, it can't just be that they had a great class size one, and then had a bad one the next year, and then a great one, and then a bad one. They have to have four years of straight, good class sizes for it to have, you know, educational benefit. And your class sizes, good, can range from fourteen to eighteen to twenty, depending on the group that does the research. And so I'd say, you know, I mean, fourteen is amazing, eighteen is good. Anything start getting north of twenty is not so good.
And where, where are we average in talent? I'm sorry if we've already mentioned it.
Oh, no, no, the, you know, our average stay at the high school is around the twenty to twenty-one, ten, and each of the twenty-one. In the K-five zone, they're far too high. We're trying to figure out ways to help with that.
Are we around the same in the K-to, K-five range?
K-to-five range here. You're looking at averages of the twenty-two and twenty-three, but if you look at, in that report, you can see what the individual class sizes actually are, and they range up to twenty. They can be, there's a couple of sections for any that's there that are twenty-five. That's not great. You know, and we're working on ways to try to ameliorate that as best we can.
And what are some ways that we kind of address that?
Well, you know, to sustain budgets, you don't require our class sizes to go any higher, to reclassify and transfer people around as, and while, you know, as class, classes fluctuate in their own size. We have a few challenges right now in that, you know, you'll notice that talent has hit its plateau. It's going to start going up now in enrollment over the next ten years. That enrollment is mostly K-five. So we're gonna be shifting our energy with respect to, you know, workforce to the K-five zone, and start trying to build more, you know, more K-five teachers, hire more K-five people. Something that's different from the past is, you know, you have intervention now because there are kids that are in a very significant area of need. And so it's a rob Peter to pay Paul thing. You could take an interventionist to move them into a classroom role, but then you have a very large population of children that are looked at by the state as having tier-two and three needs, which is a level of need that's higher than your average child. About fifteen percent near tier-two, about five percent near tier-three. And if you don't provide the tier-two and tier-three, you have much higher special ed designations typically because of it. So the state has this RTI, so basically, it's these groups. And so if you don't have people to address the tier-two and tier-three needs, like when you move them from an intervention role into a classroom role, you can lower classroom size, now you have a big group of kids that are the most challenged and the most suffering, who aren't getting a service, and usually that increases your achievement gap. Because now more of them go into special ed, there are lower performing students in special ed, you know, higher performing general ed, and you have an achievement gap. And right now, in our schools, we have an achievement gap. So we can't take anyone else out of intervention and throw them into general, because we already have an achievement gap that we've been working to fill, to narrow. And that is one of the things we get dinged on our accountability. So, you know, we're doing our best, and we're looking at ways that, you know, in the future, if we can get a five-year stretch of budgets that we can predict, we can start to build at that K-five level, while, you know, enrollment naturally makes adjustments and other things. So in the next five years, we'll need to build that up a bit.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions for Dr. Will? Dr. Will, if I may, I might actually pass over you and, and ask the Board of Ed Chair and Vice Chair, where he is. Is this four-point-eight-four percent budget increase sufficient to meet the program goals and objectives of the Board of Ed and talent public schools for the next fiscal year?
You know, I'm gonna, sorry, Tony.
Thank you, Tony.
Key on a bit of what Dr. Will had said there. It's a good start. You know, what we're looking for, and what we've, you know, what we've kind of touted throughout this process that we've reached to this point, is this fact that the budget is not a one-year endeavor. You know, we're looking at five years, much to the point that Mr. Foley made, the town's five-year. The budget as proposed now is a good start, and it'll put us on that path to, to continue to build back, like Dr. Will had said, and to provide that resource and those those capabilities to the children.
I echo Tony, John Dowdson. I echo Tony. I think that it is a good start. I think that the board as a whole had a goal to get us to as level of the service and budget as we could. There were thirty-one positions that were requested by administrators for this budget that were not even looked at or included, and a lot of those were interventionists, social workers, reading teachers, to help with some of the things that we're talking about that are still a struggle, and still will likely be a struggle for some time, adding if we keep this. You know, to Congressman's point, that that's where that matters. You know, that's where taking six hundred and fifty thousand dollars from our operating budget would have us reduce further and lose a lot more of these things. So, yeah, I think that this budget is really important to get us closer to a place where we are better meeting the needs of our students and our staff. Thank you.
I think that's it for Board of Ed. Thank you, Dr. Will, thank you. Mr. Foley, is there anything else in terms of the town manager's proposed budget for tonight?
No, I believe we're.
Wonderful. So we are now on Agenda Item Four, which is Public Participation. This is listed, limited to Agenda Items. We will have a three-minute limit, which I am going to enforce. Um, and we will go back and forth between the room and online. Um, if you would like to speak, please come up, give us your name and address. Give three minutes and then we'll start in the room and we'll go online. So anyone would like to speak? Okay. Is there anyone online who would like to speak?
Oh, did you want to go? Hi.
Go ahead, George.
George Olrich, Fisher Green Road. Like I said, a few weeks ago, a month ago, speaking for myself personally as a taxpayer. Uh, either I pay or I pay. So this moving of the funds around as a taxpayer makes no difference. What upsets me is the fact that we don't want to admit the school is actually getting a six-point-three-five increase. Because they took the one-point-five out and moved it into the other budget, the town budget. So the school is actually getting a six-point-three-five, but nobody wants to say that because they're afraid the paper won't approve it. But one way or the other, in our taxes, we are going to pay for it. So it's always been in the other area. But now it's not. But that was a choice. I was there way back when. And the Board of Ed and everybody else thought it was the greatest thing since sliced bread. We're going to set the world on fire. We're going to show everybody, this is a way to go with energy and all this other crap. Well, we're going to have the same problem with our electric cars pretty soon, but that's another story. So anyways, my only other thing is, is also the, uh, the budget. Last year was the biggest ever jump for school board, one-point-one. Now we're looking at two-point-ten. That's a tremendous increase in the school budget. And the last thing is, in my opinion, the town council, for the majority, is very biased to the school board. So much so that you're forgetting the people that you represent. You represent all the taxpayers, not just the school. I understand, I had kids in school, I went to this very school, I understand. But think about all the other people you're putting the burden on. I would assume we have just as many seniors in this town as we do children. And we have to take care of the seniors as well. And many people, don't forget, the majority of people in this town do not even have children at school. You only have two thousand students, even if you add six, four thousand for the other people, that's still only six thousand. We still don't have fifty percent of the people. So represent all of us and not just lean one way or the other and admit that it's a six-point-three-five increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, from a key. Yes. Dan Sheridan.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. So, yeah, there's obviously, uh, Dan Sheridan about to give my address and everything because I'm a board member. Does that exclude me or are people going to understand where I live and everything?
If you could just give your name and and address, we'd appreciate it.
Just, that's all right. Dan Sheridan, ninety-one Fieldstone Drive. But, um, there, there's been a lot of discussion, obviously, on the Board of Education budget. And obviously, as a member of the Board of Ed, I, I, I won't let the council know. Obviously, I support the proposed budget as it stands. Uh, I'm a new member of the board and, in my opinion, some of the things are falling off. That I personally don't want to see fall off. Um, again, in my opinion, the budget this year proposes the biggest increase in over a decade. Um, again, in my opinion, I hope the person who's been most intimately involved with the budget process over the last ten, fifteen years, who's hasn't been receiving what he's asked for. Could do some great things with what we're proposing, uh, as far as an increase goes. But now that we've got a, a fantastic five-year plan, uh, in place that I fully support. Uh, I think there's areas, especially funding, special education curriculum, things like that where we could. It could actually be a money saver for this town. Um, it's not an expenditure. It is areas where we could absolutely improve. So, again, I just wanted to say really quick, uh, it's been a long meeting tonight. But I support where we stand today and the budget that we propose. So that's all I got for you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
I'm sure you all are too. Karen Rand, 15-year-old way. Uh, fun fact, um, when I first served on the Board of Education, I served alongside Mr. Shea. Um, and he served as the chair to our search committee at the time when we were searching for a new superintendent. Thank you, Joe, for bringing us Dr. Will it. Extreme value to Tallinn. If you'd like to talk about return on investment, I can do that at the meeting. Um, also would like to point out that the first page of budget presentation shows a graphic from twenty-fifteen of one of the best places to live. It's time to move on from that, and I don't think we need to include it in the budget presentation anymore. Please, Mr. Foley. I think we're far beyond that. Almost ten years. Um, I'm advocating tonight for building consensus among this group. And unanimous support of the town manager's proposed budget, including the BOE portion. My children and other families locked out on opportunities, robust curriculum improvements, and so many potential investments. Due to continuous cuts over the years and not because of lack of support from our superintendent. But from a systemic and structural problem here in Tallinn. It's how we talk about the budget. Town versus schools, fire department versus schools, is not how we should be having this conversation. I heard it from some of you tonight. It's disappointing. I'm advocating for use of our many savings buckets to offset some tax increase. Use them now while the roof is leaking and the holes are getting bigger. I'm advocating to find a way to remove the geothermal debt from our school's operating budget. It's not how it's done. Be bold and fix it now. Begin the healing. I will continue to advocate for more adults in front of our students. Ask any of them how a custodian, parent educator, or office staff person brightened their day because of a smile. Or you got this, or any kind of positive motivation that got them to school that day. Ask the teacher what it's like in an unplanned lockdown, locked in a room with more kids than they should be asked to handle. We need more adults, not less. The needs of a school do not lock out the door with enrollment decreases. We're way past that. Aside from multi-year financial plans, I'm still advocating for a municipal strategic plan. And one with teeth that will withstand the political challenges we have in Tallinn. Please Google it. Because I know I'm not alone when I say, I'm tired of Tallinn touting our triple-A rating on the heels of underfunding our schools.
If you could, please.
Let's please change that. Thank you for your service to the community. Go home and go to bed.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online who would like to speak? Catherine McNulty, maybe?
It's Katie McNulty, eight forty-seven Old Stafford Road, actually a Board of Ed member. Um, I just wanted to say that I'm happy to hear that, you know, there's this opportunity being considered to put the accounting straight in town and put things in their proper place. I do think that, you know, you're, you're discussing several different budgets. And so each of those budgets should, you know, serve their specific purpose. And, you know, moving the use of funds would serve the purpose of the town rather than just the Board of Education. Um, and we just reiterate what Dan said, that, you know, I completely support this budget. I think it'll do what the school system needs now and looking towards, uh, what we need in the future is. Yeah, that's it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tony Holt, sixty-seven Miles Old Road. Uh, for those that didn't notice today, you know, I'm not only a resident, I'm a parent of four, and I'm Board of Education Chair. You know, I take what what George said there, and and I agree. You know, we have to look at this as more, more than just the board and the town. It it's a holistic budget. You know, as, as a resident, I don't want to give a single dollar reward in taxes than I have to. Uh, but out of my four kids, two of them are Tallinn grads and one of them is a second grader. So, you know, I have got a vested interest, not only in making sure that this town stays amazing, but that our district stays amazing. Like the board said, you know, all the people that have talked, we are absolutely committed to trying to provide for our students and for our staff without unduly burdening, you know, the town and, you know, the residents. We're trying to be as transparent as possible. Now, I offer to to all of the residents, to all of you, uh, here on the council. Sit in on our committee meetings, sit in on our, on our board meetings. Uh, read the, the minutes, watch the videos, ask the questions. We will answer every question you have. We're, we're not trying to pull the wool over anybody's eyes. We're not trying to get any extra money that we don't need. Uh, we will show you and we'll be happy to to explain it. I thank you for everything that you've had to do. I am especially thankful to Mr. Foley of Hancock for taking the time to explain some of the harder parts of the public two week. And and again, anything we can do to help this understanding and to move this process along, we happily do. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online who would like to speak?
So I saw somebody wrote, I can't raise my hand.
Yeah, I heard Tony couldn't raise their hand. Could we? Could we ask Tony to unmute and see if that person?
Where's Tony? This person here?
I think so, yeah. Tony, can you speak now?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I couldn't, I don't know why, I just didn't have an option to raise my hand. It just said, I don't know. But anyway, uh, Tony Mora, forty-two Center Row, Tallinn. I'm not going to beat around the bush. I want, I want it all. I want a thriving town with a real ice rink, a state-of-the-art fire department, classroom sizes of eighteen. A high school course selection that's competitive. Senior citizens who feel valued, parents who feel heard. If I'm putting together a wish list, I'd love a police department and home ec and wood shop back in middle school. But if I can't have it all, I'd like to know from the town council and our town manager. What makes one population more important than another? What makes millions of dollars worth of town equipment more important than education or potable water? The reality is, I can't afford a tax increase, but I'm still going to vote yes. I'm a mom, and in true mom fashion, I'll figure it out. I'm advocating for the budget as proposed. If the trap, if the town truly cares about all its residents. The elderly, current students, future students, single-income families, double-income families. Those struggling and those thriving, everyone. If the town truly cares about the tax implication on all of us. Then tell us what you're willing to cut that's equitable for all parties involved. If our reserves are as healthy as they seem to be on paper, why are you not discussing the possibility of using them? I believe this board is clever enough to think outside of reductions and outside of increased taxes. I believe our town manager and our superintendent superintendent would be diligent about looking ahead, staying true to a five-year plan. So we are not back here again next year saying the same thing. The GF policy states it was created in consideration of unanticipated events that could adversely affect the financial condition of the town and jeopardize the continuation of necessary public services. What exactly does that mean? What exactly does it take to consider using these funds? Based on tonight's slide, the town will still have over ten million dollars in unassigned funds. Or over fifteen percent left after the assumptions. I think it's fair to say now would be a great time to put some of those dollars back into our entire community, not just chosen parts. Thanks, and I apologize, I have a terrible cold, so hopefully that came across okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room? Please, Jeff.
I'm down to BOE, one fifty Timber Trail, um. I've already spoken tonight, and I think you guys know where I stand on the budget. Please fund our budget. Um, and please try to utilize whatever you can to do so. Um, I did just want to mention something just because of a couple comments. So I'm the, I'm on the town of Tallinn website right now looking at the budget proposal. On February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four, the Board of Education adopted the budget and it was conveyed to the town manager as required by the town charter. The BOE adopted two separate budgets. The first budget was for a six-point-three-five percent increase for forty-five million some odd dollars. This proposed budget included a transfer of one million five in accordance with the utility internal service fund agreement, et cetera, et cetera. The second adopted budget of the four-point-eight-four removes the six forty-nine, four twenty-nine, and requests the town to include it in debt capital payments. So I just wanted to be clear that we were very upfront with our request. We stated that it would be a six-point-three-five without the budget assumptions that were included with the four-point-eight-four percent.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online who would like to speak? Yes. Bebe, Mary Lee.
Okay, I got it muted. Thank you, everyone. This is Mary Lee Bebe. I am at ninety Rhodes Road in Tallinn. Um, first, I wanted to thank everybody, uh, tonight for the presentation, um, and just for the effort that you all made. Um, it was an extremely comprehensive and detailed presentation. And the staff was tireless in trying to answer questions, um, and and providing detail. So thank you all very much. Um, I would really like us to consider changing the way we refer, we refer to our community. Um, we hear a lot of town versus Board of Education, but we are all the town. We have various municipal departments and the BOE comprises, um, along with these municipal departments, comprises the town. We are not the town and some other entity out there called the Board of Education. And I think words matter and framing it that way, um, leads us into, um, a division that really we don't intend to be there. So I'd like us to consider changing that language in our presentations moving forward. On the topic of education, um, I support, I'm actually going to echo Tony's, um, statements. I want it all too, and but I realize after living here for more than forty years and and paying taxes here for more than forty years that we can't necessarily have it all. Um, I have seen, and and I've said this before, an enormous reduction in what has been available at the school since my own two children, um, went through them. Uh, I think that it's detrimental, um, to our status as a town and to ultimately to our, our tax base. Um, because you want people to come and move here. You want home values to stay robust. Um, we've, something that's been referred to tonight, um, I've heard the education budget referred to as a burden. Um, this is astonishing. Our four bears sacrificed everything to provide an education for their children. They built schools with their own hands. They paid teachers with chickens and eggs. Education is something that when you are young, you are subsidized for. Yeah, other people subsidize you. And then when you're older, um, we pay it back, as I'm doing now, now that my children are gone and they, they are no longer in school. So, um, as we move, you know, we, we try for balance. I support the budget as it stands and, um, I'm looking forward to tomorrow night's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak?
Dana Fubin, eleven Heather Springs. Um, I'm a parent, I'm a taxpayer, Board of Ed member. Um, I moved to Tallinn in two thousand fifteen, the year that, uh, on the front of our presentation said we were one of the top places to live. Um, I Googled where we stood now and we don't even follow any of those rankings. So I just, it was interesting. And one of the reasons why I came to town, to town, was not only for the school systems, but it was the small-town charm and all of the different things that Tallinn has to provide. I look for a town that when my in-laws need to be with us, it's going to have the resources for them to be here. So I want to, I want to repeat with, reiterate what Mary Lee said. We are the town of Tallinn and the Board of Education is one of those departments, just like Public Works, just like any other department within town. When we're talking about these funds and why we're moving them from one place to another and why we're doing it now. It's because we were thinking, you know, we've been digging, we've been digging, and we've been digging and trying to be cross-spective and trying to be efficient. And we found this and we're like, hey, what's going on? This is weird. It's in the wrong bucket. And we found this and we're like, hey, what's going on? This is weird. It's in the wrong bucket. So it's putting it in the proper bucket within the town. We wouldn't be having the waste and refusal services put on the Board of Ed budget. So just in that perspective, that money should just be put, placed in the appropriate bucket, just like we're talking about every other bucket in town. Um, like Dan said, this is step one. I think Jen said it and Tony said it. Um, this is step one in an opportunity to get us to where level services should be. We've been negative zero point, one point seven, point two zero. Yes, we, it was a higher budget last year, but that's just because simply we've had ten years of a bad run, bad budgets, not fulfilling what we needed. And that's a question of, and I think it's a bigger conversation. It is a five-year plan. It's a ten-year plan. It's a fifteen-year plan. It's a strategic plan um, on how Talon can be funded and not just be tax, taxpayers funding. Right? And that's a different plan for a strategic plan and where we're going to get that and how we're going to do that to help our, uh, support all of Talon. Um, several of us board members spoke tonight. Several parents have spoke tonight. Um, I'm here to support Talon. I want to be the town that my kids want to move back to and raise their families, like some people on these boards have done. And friends that I have in town have moved back here to raise their families. So let's make sure that we have a thriving school system. Let's make sure we have a thriving Public Works. Let's make sure we have a thriving rep department. Let's make sure we take care of all of our citizens in town. This is truly step one, and I can't speak for my fellow board members, but the consensus seems to be that we all support this. We all work very hard. You know, we joke about that this is the day some of us agreed for the first time in different years. Sorry.
Thank you.
But you have a board that's united and you have a board that dug deep. And we have a town council that can do the right thing for the entire town. This is step one for the five-year plan.
Thank you.
You all.
Thank you.
Budet Morehouse, system? Uh, good, good evening, everybody. Budet Morehouse, eighty-nine Merlot Way, Talon. I just want to thank everybody for all the hard work and, um, the digging that you have done to come up with this budget. Through the presentation, I've heard the word estimated at least a hundred times. Can you reassure me that this is the actual best that you can do? Because I'm also going to piggyback on Mr. Ulrich as, as well, that there are people in this town that feel like we want to be part of the, you know, supporting the schools and this and that. But a lot of us are being forced to look at our bottom line. In this economy, everything is higher, electricity, heating oil. Not everybody makes the, the, um, income medium in this town. There are people that are struggling and we just, you know, they just can't afford, you know, the, the, the higher taxes. So when you're estimating our budget, is this, is this as tight as you can go? This is tough time for a lot of people. I'm a business, um, owner in town. I work in people's homes. I've seen the struggles. They are real. These are our friends and neighbors that are, these are the people that you're asking to dig deeper and deeper, fixed incomes. I want to support the schools. I, I believe that we should all have a good education for our children. But when the pockets are getting empty, how, I mean, how do you expect us to, to keep up with it? So I'm asking, you know, like I said, I've heard the word estimation. This is an estimated number. Is this the best and the tightest budget you can put forth for everybody in town? To support the schools, to support the seniors, to support the safety and fire and police? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak? Anyone else on Zoom? Okay, I've seen no other public participation. Uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'd, I'd like to make a, make a comment to those in the room at all or?
It's not, no, we finished, we are on adjournment. We have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there objection to adjourn?
Objection.
Okay, we will take a roll call vote then. Chris? Holly? Dan?
Thank you.
Right, it's, uh, no, I'm sorry. What's your vote? Jen, hi. I'm Paul Swinai. That motion fails. Uh, we are on the adjournment portion of our agenda, which is the full rate.
Or I could ask our town manager if I could speak to a member of the public, which is formal.
That.
And acceptable under First Amendment free speech. Brian, Brian, am I allowed to?
If you would like to participate as a member of the public, you are certainly welcome to, uh, go to the desk and participate as a member of the public. We'd be happy to open public participation for you.
I was wondering if I could speak to someone that's here.
There, there is no back and forth during public participation. Public participation is for the public to make comments to us. It is not a back and forth.
Although I would comment, you, you've commented to, uh, people who have participated and.
And I started this conversation.
That you've spoken with. So what, is that any different than what I'm ascertaining?
Yes.
Okay. Um, is it George?
Would you like to speak as a member of the public?
I could speak to you after.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Chris. Is there a second?
I can send it back.
Is there objection to adjournments? Is there objections? Is there objection? Without objection, then we are adjourned.
Thank you.